Norman, do you like to lead this off?
No, thank you Mayor. Yeah, as I was thinking of these cerebral endings, my dad, I grew up on a farm, my dad's always been a super a lot of flood year games, and we'd walk miles and miles and ditches and put dams to get it to go. And he's getting pretty old. Now I got him calling my mom and Duke to Europe, we can have a funeral there, but he can can't even get into his favorite ballgames of what to do and to get around. So I heard this talk, it was by Elder Benner, and his next door neighbor was Elder Hales. He was talking to him one day, and it says, "Elder Hales, you have been a firefighter, a fire pilot, you were a great baseball player, phenomenal golfer. You have been physically robust and active your whole life, and now you can barely move." And he'd be at a push around in a wheelchair, and I'd be pushing on a wheelchair. I said, "What have you learned going from the state of being so physical, vibrant, to now? You are almost incapacitated." And he looked at me and said, "David, when you can't do what you've always done, then you only do what matters the most." And that got me thinking too. I know everybody's super busy, they got a lot of stuff, and I appreciate all the effort. Some nights we get done at nine o'clock, and sometimes they're later, so everybody gets up to do what they think's vital for the citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much, Norman, and welcome to Nibley City's May 1st, Happy May Day, May 1st, city council meeting. Let's start with a roll call. Get ready, please, Garrett.
Garrett Mansell.
Eric Man.
Nathan.
Larry Jacobson and Kay Willmott.
Levi.
Levi Roberts, city planner.
Justin Mon, city manager.
Tom Dickinson, city engineer, and acting as recorder, not city recorder, but reporter tonight.
Well, introduce, introduce our standees here, please.
We have the Public Works Director, Stevie Elston, Water, wastewater vision manager, Jared Pratt, and Austin Kimball, the Welltech Systems Manager, and Rod Elwood, the Parks Director.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you to consider approval of the April 10th meeting minutes, and let's stop there. To approve the minutes of April 10? We have a motion from Nathan and a second from Garrett to approve minutes from April 10. Discussion on that? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Thank you. So on the agenda, the agenda that's in front of you, give you a chance to think about this one item. This is the rezone to the south. What item is that, please? Don't see it.
15.
Item 15. So the last I heard, I assume is still the case?
No.
So. Okay, well, discuss the new ones.
They'll actually.
On this agenda. With that, I'd ask the council to consider its next agenda. Motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, a motion from Norman and a second from Gary. Thank you. Any discussion to approve the agenda? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thanks. Next, we have a public comment period. This is your opportunity to address the council on anything that you would like to talk about. We are limited on not having policy discussion at this point, because we need to agenda those kinds of discussions with, so the citizens of Nibley know what we're talking about. But if you have information for the council, we invite you forward. There was a sign up sheet, you don't have to sign up if you're interested in coming forward and telling the council what's on your mind, we'd love to have you. Agenda item. And you're a proponent or something, then we'll Okay, seeing, seeing none? I'll close the public comment period. Let's go to a planning commission report. Levi, I'll ask you for that, please.
Yeah, so two of the items that are on the agenda were, were on the planning commission agenda as well. The Nibley Meadows Development Agreement Amendment and the Logan-Nibley Boundary. Just, I'll, I'll address those later on the agenda. Also, the Godfrey Orthodontics Building, which is gonna be just a few doors down from City Hall, 325 West, 3200 South, their site plan was approved for a 3,000 square foot orthodontics building there. So you'll probably see that under construction in a few months here.
Did that include sign standards?
Yes.
Those are approved as well?
Yes, yes. There was one exception approved to the, the amount of glazing, but.
Across the body.
Yeah. Right, it did, it did the whole. Yeah, the whole process. There was a conditional use permit approved for a residential facility for persons with disability. And this was, it was in a town home, so it's a smaller, for up to four individuals, but it requires a conditional use permit. And Nibley City has an ordinance that specifically addresses group homes and, you know, different, different types, and so that, that was approved. There was a public hearing on the RM zone. The planning commission did hold a discussion, but they, they tabled that item. They, they had a number of changes that they, they wanted staff to bring back before they, they were prepared to, to make a recommendation. And that's it.
Yeah. Thanks to the planning commission. So Norman just whispered in here that we have a scout troop here tonight. Is that true? I'm not letting you guys off the hook so easily. I know the public comment period is going, but with the council's consent, I will ask someone from that scout troop to come forward and identify. You don't have to give names of people, but what troop are you from?
Air. Please.
Yeah, so we have people, believe it or not, we're one of the hottest YouTube, there's a microphone. Believe it or not, we're one, we're one of the hottest YouTube channels going on Thursday night, and so everyone wants to hear what you're about to say. Excellent. Thanks for being here, and please feel free to contact any of these council members if you have questions after the meeting and say, "What the, what the heck was that?" All right. Next, we have a, a water wastewater presentation from Jared Pratt. Jared, great to see you here tonight. Thank you so much. It's a tough night to be indoors. I've decided it's beautiful out. Yeah, but we, we are, we're very much looking forward to hear what you have to say about a very important service provided by Nibley City.
Glad to be here. I guess you introduced me to people that don't know me, many of you, Jared Pratt. I actually have the, the pleasure of being the water department's starting partner. A great team. Start out with just introducing the team. Pat Young, Ricky, he's over all of our water operations. James Cleverly is our wastewater operations, he's over all that. Austin Kimball, he's over the Welltech, more quality, cross connection, so on. And then, as I mentioned before, I have the pleasure of giving a good pleasure about mission statement of Nibley City is mission of Nibley City Water Department is sustained excellence by providing clean, safe drinking water to the community. Our goal is to maintain a utmost professionalism and dedication in energy and maintaining the city's water infrastructure, while fostering a collaborative and supportive work environment for all team members. Together, we strive to safeguard the health, well-being of our residents and continue to the overall growth and prosperity of Nibley City. So having said that, I'll just lay out a little bit of our structure. So I've got a structure, the Mondays are my day, so I'm in charge Monday. And anything I've got on my dashboard, I come in, I've got the whole team at my fingertips, we go out, we take care of it. When Tuesday comes along, it's John. He's over all the water operations that I spoke for. So he's in charge of the whole day, we work for him. Anything on his schedule, he puts us to work, we go, we're his team, we take care of it. Wednesdays come, same, same idea. We've got that for James Cleverly with wastewater. And the benefit is, the way we do this is everything gets its fair share. Because in a small city with the limited resources, we can let, per se, maybe a sewer get a little bit going, or maybe the water on Monday. So having these guys leading the pack, and they take ownership in this, is just phenomenal for Nibley City. If you've seen the benefits of it, it's, it's doing well. So come Thursday, we have Austin Kimball, he's in charge of all our Welltechs, as I mentioned, cross connection stuff, backflow. Same thing, Thursdays come and he puts us to work. Now there is days that things come up and we have to trade around, we make it work, but this really builds the team that I have envisioned, and these guys are top-notch. They've all, they're all veteran. They're all leaders. And that, we're lucky, because Nibley is so small, I said this, and I don't want to say this in the wrong way, but Water Water Department, Nibley is too small manned for us to train new individuals without this structure. Now that we have this structure, as we grow, we get bigger, we're, we've got the foundation to teach new up and coming operators in this industry. So that's how we're kind of structured that way. To start out with the dashboard here in front of us, it's just a snapshot of GIS, and this is all the water lines that we have. Apparently, we do have a couple four inch water lines, but most of our water lines are six inch to 18 inch main water lines, and there's 63.6 miles of that water. So. Next time you hit your faucet, you might have ran pretty dizzy to get to here. So the next item got is valves. 941 valves in the city. The way we structured this, John's got it laid out, is we're splitting them in half, so half of them get done one year, the other half the next year's. And that's just valve maintenance. We do have some that are broke, we're aware of, some older 12 inch valves that are on the list. We're projecting about three years to get them all replaced. That sounds bad, but they're broken open. Doesn't mess with any service, it's more of a headache for us. We gotta shut something down, the negative would be impacting more citizens out of water. But it's an expensive endeavor with these 12 inch valves and a lot of work, so we've got a plan, we've been working on those. As they come up, we put them on the list to fix. Currently, we have a leaking one that John's got planned for, so we're gonna be hitting that up pretty soon. Fire hydrants, that's a big concept. Of course, a lot of fires we've had, unfortunate, but we have been very fortunate in having water coming out, so. Years ago, mentioning this, we were having a real struggle getting parts for some of these fire components, so the whole, the too late. I'm currently glad to say we've got all the hydrants up and working, and we do have some parts on the shelves. And the way we split up these fire hydrants, we've done them in 25% of them a year. So every four years, every hydrant's gone through, top to bottom. If we flush them and we grease them and they're all well, things are good, we move on, but we do it this way because when we flush, we're using a lot of water. So it's a little easier not to flush them all in one year and use millions of gallons of water. Plus, there's just so much to do when we repair it. And you'll see a slide in a few coming up here about just show a little bit of us repairing a lot of parts and pieces, and any of them we come across that need to be maintained, we get them up to brand new, it's good as new. So water meters, that's a big subject for the water department. It's a big cost for the city. We have, like it says here, 2,224 water meters and growing. All of the new development, they're, they're paying for their meters, they're paying for our, their charges to come into the city. Of course, all the ones in the city have paid for them, but 15 to 25 years, we're finding meters are dying. Biggest reason is they are running out of battery. And so the register dies, and then we gotta get in there, replace the register. Some of the meters die, we gotta replace the meter, so forth. I haven't added it up exactly, but the city has millions, and that is millions of dollars in these meters. It's essentially our cash register. So keeping up on those is our top priority. And it is a big budget I have every year. Well, this is a project that we just completed. What we had is in this, in that little meter barrel, the center, and that's where your meter goes. The valve on the backside took to leaking on us and causing problems, so John put together a plan, got his blue stakes, and one Tuesday morning, we come to work and he put us to it. So what I want to point out with this slide here is we have a gas line, we have a phone line, there's a lot of stuff going in the ground up here on Main Street. You guys have, everyone's probably seen the construction, they're pulling in some conduit for power. They're doing more boring, there's a lot underground. And there's equipment for this kind of work, it's just very much, it's so good, it's a last team to work at level that that we see and that we, you guys need and what they feel right for safe. So with that being said, I'd like to take the time to thank council, the mayor, and management for always giving us the resources, the equipment, because it's expensive equipment, but it saves times back, it saves a lot of effort. So safety's a big one for us. We have a lot of money wrapped up in safety equipment, and not every hole's big enough for a big trench box. This one's scenario, we use shoring, which is just the board you see there with the hydraulic ram, essentially just keeping the walls back. These guys are, have taken extreme ownership and everything that they do, keeping everybody safe, including the citizens is their number one. So you'll see with the next few slides, and I'll mention a few things, safety is paramount with this team. So we got the sidewalk back on board. And my other slide didn't, didn't fill in, but we have it, and I saw it, and it's completed at this point, looking good for them. This is the team I'm doing some firework in, prepare. The hydrant worked. We go on a lot of these hydrants, and we're just doing our manual, our, our yearly fix on the 25%. Most of them work, but some of them are what you would call stubborn. So we don't want to have the fire department over there just doing all they can do to So we don't want to have the fire department over there just doing all they can do to get it open. So we tear into it and go through, give it a new refresh. Sometimes the bolts, like the middle slide shows, they're just, they're just not worth trying to get off, so we'll just cut them right off. I want to note on the right top corner, we pull out our schematics, we have all our parts and pieces. And it is like layers, and everything has one place, unlike what they was, so it's uh hydrants, if you've never had the opportunity, it's probably like rebuilding a motor or something like that, a smaller, no. Uh, here they are cleaning it. Another thing that's weird about hydrants, our tools tend to be pretty big. We have a couple of these that go in to take a foot valve out, it takes literally two team members to get it in now. And sometimes we'll have two eight foot cheater bars to get them loose, so we have the right tools to do it. The best, but on that.
Jeremy, I was questioning the hydrants, I know Logan's been covering this with bags because of salt, did you have a bunch of the salt issue on ours?
Absolutely, so this fall, I was driving home and I seen these bags and, and I was like, oh. For years, we were trying to figure out how to best preserve these hydrants over there. I mean, they'd take them apart, we'd go get them out of dyes, we did a lot of different things. And I was driving home, I seen them, and I thought, well, somebody just got the silver dollar to sit in there. And it was probably two days later, Justin calls me, hey, have you seen these bags? It was like, yeah, he's like, we don't do it, it's like, absolutely. What I thought at the time, talked to the team, we're gonna let the winter finish out, we could've got up there and put them on. But I was gonna, we got a lot of contacts still, a lot of good friends that work over there. So we're gonna get some insight on if it's working well, if it traps moisture in and causes more problems, um and let them take a lead on that, but this next year, they give it a thumbs up. Probably see some white clear bags, of course, we'll talk with fire departments, they know, black bag on the hydrant is out of service. A clear bag, they've let the fire department know and it's working out for them. So I think it's a great idea, and it's busy roads like Logan said, Southwest Main Street up here on our main. We wouldn't do it, it's the piles throw the salt like you explained, and that salt is hard on everything, so. So here we've got our Austin, the well tech, he just got done doing, changing state standards and what Nibley City citizens require. And should, this is six forty well as well, just picture of the backup generator. It's nice to know that in case of emergency, a long-term power outage or something, that we can keep the water flowing with, with backup generators here. This is a picture of the six forty well, it's what I call the, the heart of Nibley. It runs three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and it's just an awesome well, we have a geek out, but I'll try not to, too far, but a V F V that allows us to run this just like a gas pedal, so during the winter, we can slow it down, get just the right amount of water and then summer. Currently we ramped it up, we've done two steps up, I, the between all of us, we tried to get to June before we get all the other wells on site, it saves the city a lot of money. And if we can make it, and we have the last three years, so it's our goal to make it. If we have to, we'll flip one of the other wells on, but currently, this is the one that runs three hundred and sixty-five days.
And there's, there's, there's a rather substantial differential between electric rates. I think it's during an eight hour period at night and all the rest of the time. We, how, in the middle of summer, maybe Justin's getting ready to answer, are, how close to getting all the water into the tanks during that eight hour period are we?
Okay, so what he's talking about is we get power cheap during certain time. And so I'll just use, say, nine to seven, maybe six at one point. And that's when we are efficient on order of money. And during all the reverse to winter, winter time, we turn this way down. This well, we run eight hours every day in whatever day, if it's eight hours and it's off, and that's a little water we need for that, so we stay perfectly within. As the summer months come, we're definitely out of that range. Uh, even once we bring on the other two wells, we definitely out of our perfect range. The idea with uh, the new well coming online, it can tighten that right up and our hopes are to bring us back into well within that range, it is a significant savings with the
It is.
Yeah, as Justin mentioned last time, the one star we have is keeping our we, the well tech takes ownership on that as well as so.
Right, so it's not just production, it's also storage, so that'll be, as Tom has talked to us. One of our next projects is to build more bigger tanks.
That is right, yeah, once you, once you make it, you gotta have so much on standby, so. So this uh, this slide is kind of showing these guys out doing some cleaning in the wellhouse, and what I wanted to point out is this extreme ownership and the safety, we got some harsh cleaners that we're using, and they got full face masks, also they won't get in their eyes, and respirators, they're not gonna get in their lungs. This is just how, how we do things out there. These guys, we don't want to be sending anybody to hospital, everybody needs to get home. This is a project our well tech had. It's just the Nelson well, and it used to have just an old stained outs, mint floor. He put this in there and got us to edge it all, clean it all out, and put this epoxy that, it isn't all just for good looks, it really helps for cleaning it up, it makes it so much smoother. I know he has a plan for this next winter to go in here and media blast all the pipe and paint it up, so it's gonna look nice. Just because it is an old well doesn't mean it needs to look that way, they take pride. Is there any other questions water related before we slide over to sewer?
What's the, what did you see the battery life on, one of those revolving meters are?
So fifteen years is a pro rated, this is a pro rated. Uh, well, let me rewind. Ten years is a hundred percent. If it dies before ten, they'll just give us a new. Between fifteen and twenty-five years, it's pro rated on how soon it dies. We really do see a lot of them go years, in some cases, we're getting a fifteen year out of one, it's usually a higher water user. It's turning, and so it's thinking, and it's counting, and it's doing this thing, using more battery. Sometimes if it's, I've seen, I know these guys have seen some that are deep and the cold kind of gets to them, of course, bulk gets to batteries, stuff like that.
Well, we could make a bunch of money if we just took a little bit of energy out of the paddle with it's measuring the flow to charge the battery. Just a little bit. Little, little bit of energy harvesting.
Yeah, that's a good. One of the things I was gonna point out is we strive to protect public health. Reserving the environment in short and long term, sustainability of the water infrastructure. Together, we need to create a clean, attractive city and future generations. And I've heard Vincent that clean water, this is common sense, but having sewer systems to save more lives than all the doctors put together. It's just sanitary, so we're pretty blessed to live in America and live where we have these sanitary systems. Little snapshot here, sewer, this is just the sewer mains. And the size that we got currently is from eight inch up to twenty-one inch, and a couple sizes maybe to be there's thirty-five and a quarter miles of that sewer main running around Nibley. We have nine hundred and eight manholes. The way that James has this laid out is every year, the manholes are being inspected. That's pretty much an industry, and it's a good practice. Any kids put something down the manholes, they like to put sticks down there. Realistically, we can catch a major backup typically, if you get any error, we check the manholes. There's a few manholes going out through the fields that are buried on purpose, or on purpose. Which is no problem, because he just runs his camera down through there, it's the same. One, this is James out doing some camera work. Little snapshot of what, what it looks like, maybe inside on these sewer lines there. One thing real quick to note, in the industry, it's pretty standard to have us clean sewers every four years and then camera six to eight years, that's pretty standard. And on a normal system, this got clay and concrete pipe that is needed. Nibley's all PVC pipe, we're just over twenty years old, we're in pretty good shape as far as everything in the system, there are a few bumps and bruises, but we're doing pretty good. So when we brought James on last year. Talking, it didn't take long for him to confront me and bring up an excellent idea, save the money. Save the city a lot of money, save us a lot of time, and so what we've moved to is we are now CCTVing the city every four years. The track that he's on is gonna be probably three and a half years. And essentially, I pushed back our goals of cleaning to six to eight years, but everything that needs to be cleaned, he's seen it, he's documented, and then he puts the list together. When Wednesday comes along, he hands it to the guys, maybe once a month, maybe once every two months, we go out and we clean those lines. So what this is doing for the city, well, first off, the fuel consumption of that truck costs a lot. The water consumption of clean is a resource, it's a lot. And then that truck requires two team members to run. Where he can go, he can camera, no water use, low fuel consumption, and it's a one team member out there documenting. The best thing that we're finding is we're seeing in the raw, meaning if there is a big problem, if we have grease spilled up, if we have belly. When we go through there and clean it, it's kind of like, you know, evidence for the camera. Now we're seeing, so we can document, okay, there is a bigger problem here to keep an eye on than if he would have cleaned it and then ran through, if that makes sense. So can I just do two seconds there?
Yeah.
I think that is huge, hugely important, and something I'm super proud of these guys coming up with. I felt that way when I started here ten years ago, but to get the contractors to buy into that wasn't really possible, until we had our own crew and we had our own equipment, it wasn't feasible, it wasn't possible to do, so I just appreciate these guys really putting in the effort and, and thinking about it and being intelligent about how they're operating, maintaining the system, and coming to this conclusion without any pronging from me, but I think it's perfect.
The contractors, you mean the people that we used to hire?
Yeah, some of the tricky stuff, we can form a bar on staff as we have now, we had to pay people to come to do all the stuff, and they want to come in, they want to blow and go and just clean as much as they can, rather than they're out there to make money, right, for them, not for us. And so by us just being more tactical about it, we're able to save a bunch of money and just do it more intelligently and not dependent on them and them charging us, if that makes sense.
We, we know there are things we shouldn't put down the sewer, um, grease. Things that turn solid when they get cold and coffee grounds and, you know, stuff. How well do we as a city, I don't know how you measure this, except compared to other towns and how often they have to clean things out, how well do we do as a city in terms of following the rules about what does not go in the sewer?
So the biggest thing that Nibley has in the sewer, and I'll say that only for the sewer. Is we don't have a lot of restaurants, we don't have a lot of grease producing facilities, and
That's kind of sad, but okay.
Yeah, it's only good for the sewer. Um, with that being said, we do have a lot of grease built up, it's just the nature of the beast. The biggest thing I would like to get out for all and everyone is these flushable wipes. They will flush, that is true, but they do not dissolve and they cause havoc on the system. Pumps don't like them, no, no, nothing likes. So if you want to be conscious, then it's just that would be the number one for us. With that being said, we got a couple of slides here to talk about where we mitigated a little bit of our grease problem here. Oh, here's the guy's outfits cleaning. This done.
So that looks like the back truck, is it the back truck?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the back truck, essentially, this is a sewer cleaning truck, and back in the day, that's, that's what these trucks were made for, that's what they did. Europe got on it real quick, like thirty years ago. America, we're a little slow, we finally got on it a little bit twenty years ago. And ten years ago, it took off like a wildfire. They use these trucks with vacuum excavation to do like we were showing in the picture before. Dig around these utilities and use water suction. And so now, they used to make trucks, and these are like almost a million dollar trucks now, and they used to make them, so one only did one and one did the other. All these companies have got together to where most and every company out there now makes a combo truck. We can utilize it for sewer cleaning, we can utilize it for doing this hydro excavation on a water bane, a water leak. Uh, you have, just to note, there's separate tubes, we don't stick the sewer tube down on the water leak. Just bring that out, that people can't get weird about that, so there's different tubes for different things, but that truck right there is the, hands down, well, it's the most expensive that Nibley City has, but it's hands down the, in my eyes, one of the most valuable, that sweeper. Keep that in mind for our number eighteen.
Oh, is that the budget?
Yeah, and I'll just throw a little punch here, they have gone out of control like everything else, which vices. And the biggest thing is, is you gotta keep up on, if you, if you go too far, you're putting I can just say this, one year, in another, uh, my other life. We spend a couple of thousand dollars, and here's the bolt trucks, so it can get out of our capabilities, you're gonna gotta stay in. Truck bits not breaking down. Auto pump on those are twenty-five, thirty guaranteed, so just parts and pieces are crazy, but we'll move on. Apparently, we have three lift, lift stations that we take care of here in Nibley. For those of you on the ISS, all the sewer goes gravity, it's a gravity system, and at one point, it's gotta be pumped up and sent to Logan essentially, and so are those stations. And we'll see here in a minute, we've got the whole crew here, on Scott Arms Lift Station. That's what it looks like, too desirable, and that's actually cleaned out, it's like on its best day. So we've got some rails that we've got to replace, we replaced one this day, but what they were doing is getting this ready. This year we purchased, it's pretty much just a little blower device, it sits down in there and blows oxygen into the well. And that keeps our bugs alive, you say bugs, what's going on with bugs? Well, sewer has got billions and billions of these bugs. And if we keep them oxidized, then they're gonna stay alive and thrive, and they'll eat all of our grease, it does help with the ogres as well. And so we put this in two of our lift stations, pictures, but we knew about it from our other life. They're a little spiny, but the key here is, is not just the maintenance that we're saving on. After the deal with going in and cleaning that all the time, it's also the pumps. It just makes everything smoother. So as I mentioned before, safety, we're down in these holes all the time, nobody knows it, we're in, we're out, we are our rescue crew, our safety crew, we're, we're everything, everything. We are our rescue crew, our safety crew, we're we're everything, everything we have here. We have all of OSHA's standard stamped equipment, extremely expensive things, again, we'll provide this to have that, so all these guys can go home safe. Anyone wants to visit the station? So, the little box there is the motor with the blower for this unit. And that one used to have a little bit, we could drive over. Where you're seeing that hatch, you had a different hatch, and the road closed. That's it. Long story short, we had to figure out how we're gonna get this blower. It does make noise, we talked with the neighbors, but it's very quiet, and you can't, you have to be right there to really hear it, so. These little things on the floor, black, that's them. Doesn't sound like a lot, but the technology in it is what's important. And this is, uh, I'm assuming we're just cleaning them, well, because I have one in my hand, but. The pump blows the air down there, keeps things going, and we would be every week cleaning. Couple, three, four inches of grease off the side, taking on the pumps. And then essentially, you try to pump as much as Logan's because, and then it would be right back. Now, with the bugs doing their thing, we, that's not even a thing, we don't even go wash those down unless we're going in. Once a year to do our year. There any questions about the water wastewater report? Appreciate the opportunity.
Do you have some, you've been here, you've proved how good of a job this is, and can you go over like a resume, like if someone wants to start a career or maybe?
I mean, I think he said it's a crappy job.
I think it tastes well.
So. Well, I should say what I was gonna say. Well, I told one kid, my son, to go there for a break, but mainly because it's just. But having said that. Public works in general, not just the water wastewater industry, is very needed, very reputable. You can look at every city that you go through, anywhere you go in the in the world. There's guys that build, and there's guys that maintain it, when you turn on your faucet, when you turn on flush your toilet. There's something to that, and, uh, we have a great team, there's a. Industry itself is in need for some of these young entrepreneurs to come up and some of these young guys to come in. There's some good programs through Rural Water and some other avenues that would really. Your animals and reach out to us, we can, you know. If you ever see a job opportunity, Nively, we kind of have a great thing going with some seasonals. We, every department almost, that I'm aware of, gets some seasonal help, and try to recruit some of these guys, but. We keep them away from the sewer a little bit, not the scare. You know, we can get some little little knowledge there, a lot of these kids come in and they're, they just don't even know anything about it. When they leave, we've had some that's like, I want to be an engineer now, because it's so cool, and we we tell them, hey, this is, this is all right, but. This is where you want to be. Anyways, so yeah, reach out to us if anybody has any questions that way.
Jerry, one one more, I appreciate, I'll be brief, I I appreciate the GIS graphical information system. Stuff that you've got online, documenting valves, manholes, pipes, and I think that that. To me, it seems like that's a big improvement from where we were years ago of just somebody was keeping track of this somewhere in their brain.
Absolutely, and it's a ongoing thing, we have a lot of work to do on the water wastewater side to. But I will say this, it's very long this team goal to do that. And so, we do it on a daily, and our knowledge. The way this team is, is the knowledge is for everyone. And all the guys you're talking about, we're a lot of, they left, there we know a lot of knowledge. And you do get to know the system if you've been in the same system for a while. Keeping it documented, refixing it, it's all there, some things are out of line. Got some GPS systems that work real well, they're always out GPS and trying to improve it, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Jerry. Okay, next, we have, Tom, you're gonna talk about, uh. Issuing a, first of all, notice of award and subsequent construction contract on the fifth and final phase of Southwest. Correct?
Yes, exactly, the fifth and final phase of Southwest, this this portion of the roadway goes from twenty-five hundred south. Extends north to the connection of Logan's tenth west at twenty-two hundred south there. We went to bid last month, we received three bids back. And those bids came in under budget, thank goodness. And the low bid was one point three million dollars, was stake of Parsons. The next one up was LaCrane Johnson at one point four three nine million, and. The highest bid was Sunrock at one point six three million dollars. A lot of this funding comes from COG, if you remember, we have, we have actually two grant awards that total about one point eight eight million dollars. This project came in under even that grant award, so we might be sending some of that money back that's unused. We are responsible for an eight percent match to that, whatever the contract cost at the final. And we can get started right away, with council's permission, we'll issue noticeable word. Subsequent to that, the contractor will secure bonding, secure contracts with their subcontractors. And get everything in order, once they get all that back to me, we start with some middles and a notice to proceed. Their estimated timeline to start is beginning of June, and they say they're gonna be done the end of July. This is the same.
Same year?
Same year. This is the same contractor that bid the last phases, phase three and four, which was around about a twenty-six hundred south. And extended all the way down to twenty-nine eighty, so with regard to the actual construction of it is very similar. To what phase three and four were, except we made a few tweaks on, it's called, the people call them turtles, or I call them. Concrete mountable islands, we shortened them a little bit, so they're not six inches or four inches, and we shifted them back. Toward the intersection a little bit, so it should allow a little bit of different turn movement, still have the same safety effects and. Traffic calming and force the drivers to pay attention and square up. As they make the turns in these intersections, in and out of of the intersections, but we're. They're confident they can get this done by the end of July. Just, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. Eight weeks.
Right, it must not be busy, but they.
I haven't seen a project bid under budget in years.
So there's a couple of reasons it did come in budget, we decided instead of tearing apart some of the newer road section. Through Firefly Estates project, even though it's only three inches of asphalt, or three and a half inches of asphalt. We decided to just let that arrive, we have a good base under it, so. Still have a great road, we just saved a lot of money and and the removal and the reconstruction of that portion, it was just so new. It's only a couple of years old, and the and the section is, the section that goes south. Uh, south past Firefly Estates, the actual development there, and then it dead ends currently.
Include a steel coat afterwards, I know a lot of the roads that we've been in, it's steel coat after, they come last month.
So Speed Youth has really got a great asphalt preservation program. We really want to get on these brand new roads and get a treatment right away, first year, we didn't include that price in the bid contract.
Couldn't tell from the, like, the.
Yes, it's very, it'd be almost just like the phase three, four, it's just with those minor adjustments. We have, we have more tapered ends on on every intersection, we're giving tapered ends. Visibility, and there was some concern expressed by citizens, we decided to increase that visibility. But it does have the crosswalks, the repaint. Like, yeah, just the same.
So on the, on the islands going shorter, how does that affect the the slope or the pitch of the mountable part of it? Does it just make it a little easier to handle, or is it still kind of the same?
It'll actually soften that, so the distance is about six inches from the lip. So it'll still be six inches, but instead of going six inches tall, you're only going four. So it's less steep.
The mid-low crossing.
Yes.
Between the two arcs, we do the signs and I go through again, it looks like that's pretty well. Positioned where like people use, uh. As we go, so if I remember correctly, it's right where, it's not quite centered with where one of them goes off, but we're in. We're putting in actual. Eighty-eight, five, like. Cuts that that and putting in concrete.
Yeah, yes, so there'll be ramps in place with the truncated domes, but we'll leave an opening in the. The bike barrier, that's called, also with that, there should be a bike, or excuse me, a bus stop. And the bus can't stop there, there'll be room for a shade structure if they want to put one in there. I think they can coexist with the bike path and have that that short duration stop. It'll stop traffic for a brief period of time when they load and unload a passenger, but I've been coordinating that with CP, it's not CP TV. It's contact now. They were excited to actually get a stop there, we'll have a stop in both north and south directions, and your allocation.
Remind me, the ten-foot sidewalk is the south part. Five foot is the, is that correct?
It'd be eastern, west, so the, alright, the ten-foot is on the. No, we're gonna utilize a lot of what's the existing infrastructure, but new portions of things will tie those in with the water tracks.
One thing to just think about, I know it might not be to it, but where we're doing those, um. Softer jersey barriers, I I brought up last time that a few youths have decided to use that as a stunt. Brain for bikes. Any kind of deterrent, deterrents to. You can think about to, uh, disincentivize going up those with a small wheel. I don't know if that would be, but it's just on the king of minds, we're asking these guys to put themselves in, or something we do as a city, or ask them. This makes it not happy to do, a good thing to do that, so.
Got you.
Uh, that was, that was the, and then what are we, uh, the timeline's great, I noticed that. Time, the essence in the contract, what are our, what are we prepared to do if that gets to late? What what gap we should kind of give people?
So we have liquidated damages built into the contract. And in lieu of a change order that would extend the contract time, they they are held to that completion deadline. Now, the completion deadline of the contract is October fifteen, so they're proposing to complete it way before the.
Maybe on those turtles with the mountables, there are other ones you did that asphalt on top, case. Keeps getting some drama that might need to move them or change those, is that even the same on these?
The plans don't show word, but that's my intent, yes.
Yeah, please, um, I'm going to issue notice, the ward and subsequent construction contract, it's sticker, parcel, it's only west.
We have a motion from Norm. Second from Nathan to, uh, accept the construction contract on phase five of.
All the time in the.
Yeah, that's, that's thirty years on the road plan, and this, so this is a road that'll connect Tyrone to the Logan Cash Airport. So through tenth west and Logan, so there'll, there'll be traffic there and. And, uh. We've taken steps to try to make it not be a fifty-five mile an hour speedway. Okay, any, any discussion on the motion, counsel? If there's no opposition to voting, then I'll call for a vote, I think we can do a voice vote on this, yes, okay. Those in favor of the motion to, uh, issue the construction contract, we say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you, counsel, Tom, thanks, uh, motion passes by, uh, for Ziegler. Uh, there's an election coming up, and Destin, you're gonna talk about another contract in terms of running that election?
Yes, sir. So everybody knows the election coming up, typically in the past, we have contracted, well, typically in the far past, we ran our own elections, we hired. Staff to come in, check IDs, do the votes, then we tally the votes, and we had, we did it all. A few years ago, the state passed a law that said it needed to be done by mail-in, there's a lot of change to that now, that's kind of in the works, and they're talking about. Changing the way we do mail-in ballots and things like that, but really what this contract is, is it's a contract to let Cache County. Run our election for us, and Cheryl's really the expert on this, I'm sorry she wasn't able to be here tonight, so if we have questions, there is no issue or no timeframe. If we need to push this to a second reading, and if we want to follow up with more questions or third, we can certainly do that. She's confident, I'm confident, we we read through the contract, we've had the attorney review the contract. We've analyzed what it would take for us to do our own election and run our own election, we found that that cost to be probably just a little bit more. Than what the county would be charging us to do this way, and so we were proposing as staff that we contract with Cache County to. Run the election, what that means is they print the ballots, they mail the ballots out, people return the ballots either through the mail or through the drop box. We help gather those ballots, all is taken to the county facility where they run through the machines and they tally and calc, uh, calculate the. Or tally the votes and declare winner through that, uh, through that process that most everybody else in the valley is doing, so. Uh, it is possible for us to contract with third parties, companies, as well as potentially other counties, we did look into that a little bit. We just felt, and by the time we got very far down that road, it wasn't worth continuing, and so again, we're recommending that we utilize Cache County and their services.
My next question is motions.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-five fifteen.
Okay, motion, have a motion, is there? Second from Aaron to approve resolution twenty-five fifteen. Uh, to have Cache County contract with Cache County to do our election services.
Change, like, we're gonna do, Cheryl's our expertise hired, and she suggests. For election, I don't know if you see it, but it is, uh.
Yeah, I want that, sorry, maybe a good point, we've, we've budgeted for both the primary and, uh. Election final. Final election, and we are only charged. I didn't know the right word there. The, uh, we are only charged on ballots that are returned, so we have budgeted for a worst case scenario. With the number that's in there of the twenty thousand dollars, that's what's in the budget, we'll pay substantially less than that if we don't end up having a primary. And even less depending on how many people actually return the ballot, so last time, I believe. Shouldn't say I can't, but it was substantially less than what we had contracted. Or budgeted. Yeah, that's another good point. If citizens drop them off at the Dropbox, we don't get charged.
I have anything up with. Changes or coming from the federal level and what changes are coming from the state level. Utah has led the nation. For years in vote by mail. I know the Utah, Utah letters sculpture, uh, thank you. Has made some changes to this election, so pay attention so that your vote counts. Uh, the, the motion was, did, did not weigh first reading and do second reading, but an amendment would be offered. If you're so inclined to waive the second reading.
Like to mainly wait second.
Okay, so there's a motion for amendment to waive second reading as the second on the motion to amend. There are a few discussion on the amendment. First reading or second reading. Seeing no discussion, those in favor of the amendment which would add waive second reading? Please say aye. Those, so the amended motion is. Approve this corporate agreement with Cache County and waive second. Okay, uh, anyone opposed to voting? Since this is a resolution, uh, we'll call the roll. Destin or Tom? Oh, man, you're, you're a minute. You're.
Moment of glory.
Seconds of fame. Here we go.
Councilmember Larson, what is your vote in favor? Councilmember Lowerson, what is your vote in favor? Councilmember Mansell, what is your vote in favor? Councilmember Mann, what is your vote?
Terrific. If we're in favor and unopposed, um, that motion passes, so. Next. We okay to present to the agenda? Thank you. All right. Next we have ordinance twenty-five fourteen. This is. This is a second amendment to the Nibley Meadows subdivision development agreement. And Levi, you're going to describe this for us, I think.
Yes, I will.
I see Travis is here. We'll give you a chance to. Tell Levi what you think of it.
Yeah, the, the applicant is here and there is a portion of this that I, I request. Uh, when, when it starts getting into some of the numbers, th- these are, these are based on some figures that, that the applicant has, um, estimated. So I, I think it's most efficient to just have the applicant require, or explain that part of it. Well, they have been reviewed by staff, but we can't vouch for them as much as, as the applicant can. So he, he can speak to those directly and, and other, other items as well. So there are several different, uh, components of, of this development agreement. So the Nibley Meadows subdivision is approved in twenty twenty and you see it under construction now south of thirty-two hundred south. Uh, ju- just south of the Heritage Elementary School there. And right now they've, they're constructing phases one, two, and three, uh, of, of the ten-phase subdivision. Uh, the, the, the applicant is proposing some changes to the development agreement and. And I should mention right off the bat that these, uh, a lot of these changes were, uh, prompted by a discussion that staff had with the development agreement. Amending the, the plan for stormwater facilities, uh, for the, for the development. That does add some, uh, a- additional and significant costs to the, to the developer, but there's some, uh. There, there's a benefit to the city in doing that, but the developer and, and I'll, you know, we'll get through the, the numbers is proposing some of these changes. Uh, partly to make them whole, uh, with, with the development. So there's these changes and I'll, I'll describe them in more detail, but they impact the number of allowed housing units in there. The type of units, so town home versus single family homes. The can, the configuration, so there, there is some changes to the plan and, and accommodating those additional housing units to, to the, the layout. So the R P U D is as, uh, just as a reminder is, uh. The, this is residential plan unit development is a speci- it's a specific plan that has been approved. So it's different than other zones, the, the map, the, it needs to be built to the master plan. So any changes to that, it's different than a, a standard zone which just specifies the, you know, the lot sizes and, and, and those. Uh, di- different specifications. It's a specific plan. So there is, there is a change to the actual master plan of, of development agreement, uh, or of the development. Uh, I mentioned stormwater facilities, so there's some changes in how that's configured. The amenities of, there's within an R P U D. Uh, there's specific open space amenities that are required depending on the, the size, the number of the units. As well as the required park and street improvements. So first I'm going to get into the, the change with regard to the, the plan of. Of the, you know, the master plan. So they are proposing to add fif- uh, thirty-nine additional town home units. And relocate twelve other units that are shown on the original plan. Um, while removing seventeen sing- uh, single family units. So this would in, this, in total, as you can see there, there'd be twenty-two additional units. So instead of two hundred and seventy-three, it would be two ninety-five if this is approved. They're also proposing to add a clubhouse to the plans. And they are, they are requesting to remove, uh, there, there's a, there's a road or a half road on the southeast corner of the development. Nine, nine hundred west. It's a master planned street. They, they propose to remove that, the requirement to, uh, improve that road and just to dedicate the right of way. But I'll, I'll speak to that more on, on staff's recommendation regarding these things. Um. There are, there, there are, there's also a proposal to remove the large detention pond. That's adjacent to the dedicated city park and dedicate one and a quarter acre as city park spaces as part of that. So as you can see there, uh, there's. Uh, currently on, on the current plans, fifty percent, fifty-six percent of the units are town homes. Versus sixty-five percent with this proposed amendment. This is the recorded plan, uh, uh, as amended for the development. You can see that configuration, the, the brown buildings there that, that indicates town homes and then, and then kind of the lighter color. Those are si- single family lots. So this is the new amended development plan and thankfully the developer provided it a good. Uh, schematic that shows how these, these two are changed, so you don't have to. You know, remember necessarily what's on the, the last slide to this slide, but just to show you how, how that changes. So I'll, I'll, I'll go to the next slide and describe what's changed, so. The, uh, you see some of these, some of these units are crossed out. So the, the pink, uh, kind of the pink color of town homes there. Those, those town homes would be relocated to a different lo- location, uh, further south. A part of the re- uh, the, the, the reason for this is that that's a wetland area and although the developer has. Uh, has worked to, with the Army Corps of Engineers at, at, um. On, on these areas, they're, they're, they're running into roadblocks there, so they're, they're requesting to, to relocate those. Uh, as well, as well as removing those, uh, three single family lots that you can see. That are kind of to the, toward the left of the screen, ju- just south of that green area there. Uh. The, the relocated town homes are all on the southern end. Uh, and there's, there's different colors there to know whether they're relocated from another area. Or, um, or they're new units, so the, the purple indicates that, that they're new or the, where the pink. And is, is indicating that. The pink and orange is indicating new, uh, uh, relocated or, and some of, I guess the. The orange is the ones that are replacing single family homes and the, the pink is relocated. So you can see that, how that's reconfigured, um, you know, from, from staff's perspective, one advantage of this. Reconfiguration is, is a little, it's better circulation. The, the previous plan, there's, uh, dead ends. On, on a lot, some of those town home streets and with this plan there. They connect through, so there's some, there's some advantages to that for circulation. Uh, but it, it, you know, it does display some of these single family lots for, for more town homes. Oh, and then the green area, that's that stormwater pond that would be removed. And the reason that that would be allowed is if you remember with the, we talked about this with the Hawk Hollow subdivision. And the agreement that was made, uh, with, with that. Uh, the, the stormwater would be, would be pushed across the street to the wetland area that's on the city property. Uh, but that takes additional pipe, uh, uh, dis- additional infrastructure. They've already put in the, the stormwater pond there, so they'd have to remove that. And, and so there's costs associated with, with doing all of that. Going to describe the, the, the other changes and so, you know, some of these relate to what I've already talked about, but. Just getting more specific on them. So within this agreement, it would remove the requirement for a payment in lieu of the splash pad improvement in, in the park space. And allow the applicant to build proposed clubhouse to fulfill the, the requirement of Nibley City Code for, for the, this improvement. Uh, so Nibley, within our code, there's a requirement, once you reach a certain level, I believe it's two hundred units, that. You need to either provide a, a clubhouse, a splash pad or a pool. And at, at the time that this was, uh, a- approved previously. They weren't, they weren't planning on building a, a clubhouse or pool, so they agreed for, uh, to pay a fee in lieu of a splash pad. There was actually a. One version of the agreement that said they had the choice between all of them, but the current version just says that they, they pay this fee in lieu. And it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars indexed to inflation from, I believe, twenty twenty-one. So the applicant's proposing that they, they can build this clubhouse instead. Uh, the developer is to ensure that stormwater facilities downstream of the park are sized to handle stormwater flows generated from the park space. And, uh, they're also proposing to remove some requirements within the park. So the twenty-five, the cost for twenty-five parking stalls, trails and, and park restroom. Uh, the, the developer is justifying these as. These requirements due to the, the additional expenses that are imposed by the regional pond improvements. And though they, I'll let them get into those more specifically on, on the next slides. Uh. They're also requesting some deviations from Nibley City Code. Now, I, I'll, I'll say that these aren't, uh, well, the first two here aren't necessarily deviations from the code that was in place. They're not deviations from the code that was in place when this was originally. Uh, approved and when, when, when they originally came in with their application. So increasing the allowable residential density to seven units per net developed acre. The current threshold within R P U D code is five, but it was twelve units per acre at the time it was approved. Uh. Since that time, we, the city's adopted a transfer development rights ordinance. But this was necessary, this, this exception to the code if you were to approve this. Because the, the existing code does say five units per acre and that would, it would be above that. Uh. Another change to the code is it was decreased from, uh. Previously it was eighty percent. It was allowed eighty percent of town homes versus twenty percent single family. Well, the current threshold is sixty percent, so they're proposing a deviation to allow sixty-five percent. Again, uh, the, the previous code would have allowed this when they originally proposed it, but, but we're looking at the existing code here. Um. This last one is, is something and, and maybe the developer can get into more of the, the justification here, but. They'll allow town homes to be located on a single undivided parcel. Uh, which may be developed as a single multifamily project ra- rather than as individually platted parcels. So our current code does not allow this, uh. You can't, within an R P U D, um, development. Pl- uh, you, you have to plot each individual units. Now, they could operate it like a, a apartment complex. We have nothing in our code that says you can't do that, but if you combine it, um, into one parcel, you can't sell it individually. So that's, that's the difference there. Uh, as I said, they can get in, into more of the detail, the reasons why it does, it does have to do with, with lending, uh, issues that they've run into. With, uh. Getting those, getting those built and maintain long term. Uh. Yeah.
So, so this clubhouse will be a, a city owned or will be?
No, no, it's an HOA clubhouse, yeah. The, the splash pad was going to be in the city park. And. And, and the bathrooms were city, the park, the parking was city. All of that was in the city park space. And they're, they're proposing to remove that requirement, um, as part of this agreement. So, I mean, I encourage you on this one, uh, to get in. I know there's a lot on the agenda, uh, but. Dig into whatever details you need to on, on this, but I, I just wanted to spell out every, everything. Now the, the next slides, the, the developer has provided these, um. These spread, these spreadsheets, the, a ledger that goes it, goes in and estimates. The costs and, and the benefits to both the city and the developer and, and how, how we kind of come to this. This agreement, so, uh, Mayor. At this point in the presentation, I, I think it'd be best for the developer to explain these, these numbers and, you know, anything else. And then I, I can get back to what our recommendation is, uh, for this agreement.
Okay, thank you. Who we dig in, you know, have you ever, have you ever done something or been in something, had a job where. Finish it and you look back years later and you go, wow. So about twenty years ago, I was in charge of the city's water system. And normally I'm not very interested in some of these presentations, like what size bank or something. But I gotta tell you, the tools have changed in twenty years, you know, and the fact that he has the flower symbols on his. You know, funny. But, uh, I just say, when I was listening to him, the, the, the. Employee development program that he has, I just wish I could go back and do. A better job twenty some years ago than I did running that water system. Because, and I can tell you, I've seen through these other presentations in other cities. That was. The, the, the way that he's got that shifted up and having people learn each other's jobs and the, and the employee development. I don't, I just haven't heard anything like that. So that was my stuff. So. Uh, when, when Tom came and, and said, hey, we're looking at this regional pond, what can we do? How do we? Aim for this and how do we, how can we run through the, the development? He worked with the engineer incising some things and, and we started putting costs in. Started this cascade of, of changes on how, how do we accommodate this and how do we get it paid for? So it was kind of a mess in the first version we brought through and they asked us to kind of put this into a ledger format so it makes more sense and we can see the benefits. Uh, the, just the trade-offs there financially to the city and to us. And so that's what we've attempted to do here. Breaking it down into different parts of this. Part one, um, with the bypass pipes. It, it, it just assigns a cost to, well, what, what's it going to cost us to do what, um, the city needs us to do? So that's a negative on our side, but a negative on your side is we're going to take a part of. The capacity that you're creating in that new regional bond, so we assign a value to that. And then we just kind of work through this ledger like that. Uh, we'll talk about what it's going to cost us to reclaim the, the pond that we've already done. Adding, um, some additional bypass pipes. The value of dedicating the extra land to the park. And then on the other side, um, I can't remember if it was Tom or Levi that brought up, well, now you don't have to maintain this park in perpetuity. Or, or not the park, the, the pond by the park. So we had to hit our side with that. There's, there's a value to us that. in not having to maintain it forever. And so just with with that, the first, the first uh, look at the changes that were made, that's about where the balance sheet comes out. There's, depending on whether you credit one side or debit the other side, whatever, there's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of of difference there. So now we go to the second part.
Do you, do you want to go back? Can you explain that last line, the two hundred thousand, maintaining the pond?
So, so the age, the the pond that's next to the park there, that one whatever acre, there's, there's a cost to that in in to the HOA to maintaining it forever. And so basically, this is a, this is an estimate of establishing basically a fund in perpetuity. That if you have that balance in the bank right now, then you can pay for the maintenance of it forever. You draw it down with the cost of maintaining, you'd increase with interest and you'd inflate that over time. So that's where where that number comes from.
So your HOA would be two hundred thousand to maintain that on over the next, oh, wow.
Over the lifetime, yeah, until perpetual.
Well, that's, that's a plus in the, yes, ledger, because they don't have, that is, yeah.
Thanks. Uh, okay. So, um, this one here just brings that same dollars toward on top one. And then this one is really kind of neither here nor there, but then Levi mentioned it there, it was part of our first amendment was after we did the delineation of the wetland in there, it affected the twelve units, the two sixplexes that are in the top of phase three. And even though, um, if since delineated it and have determined and have put in an A J D request to the Corps of Engineers for a determination that is non-jurisdictional, they don't process those. They have no timeline to process them, they have no desire to process them. They kind of got um, their feelings hurt over a recent Supreme Court case that uh, decided against the Corps of Engineers. And Florida lost their primacy in in dealing with wetlands. So now the Corps took that over and so they raided the employees from Utah that were processing, that had, we had any hope of getting this processed. And there is no timeline out that give us for actually doing their job and processing these applications. And there's no requirement for them to do their job. They just sit there bored years and years and years. So this i- in the, in the shuffle, that's what those twelve units are. There's no addition, there's subtraction, it's simply moving them from the north to the south. So.
We'll go to the next one.
Uh, okay, so now that carries over to the top part. The next section there is, uh, so that's, oh, I'm sorry. I got ahead of me. That's the, that's the next one. The first one with the twelve and twelve, that is, that, sorry, that was offsetting the value to balance that out, the hundred nine thousand and hundred sixteen. I got ahead of me. I wish we didn't know them twelve. So that actually just says, okay, if we're gonna clean this up and have those two uh, in balance, we would need an additional twelve townhomes to balance the account right, right there. Okay, so section one, that balances the account. I got ahead of me. The next section down is the net balance, which is remove twelve townhomes from phase three and add those same twelve towns. So the first twelve townhomes is there's a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar roughly disparity that was carried over from the changes in in the first section. And how to make that whole would be adding twelve town. Okay, and then, so now we'll go back, we'll pass the ones that have the pink X and pink hash, and we'll go to kind of the cascade of where do we put those? And where where we put them, Levi, can you go back to that drawing that shows the changes down? So, so the the two pink Xs at the top there, those are the two that are the wetland. You can see that little finger underlying that, that comes from the west and gives them the little neck between the two buildings and then overlaps the two paintings. That's the wetland. Uh, so those now we've shown in the pink down below, we've shown twelve, shown twelve uh, replacement units down below. And then, but to find a place for those, we removed those, uh, I believe it's seven lots, the M eight eight. Seven, seven lots with the orange Xs through there, the significant. And that's where Levi was talking about extending those dead-end driveways that were on the existing phase four. Through those, where those orange lots are now. And that's what created the space for these townhomes to fit. Okay.
And then the the purple that we removed, so that's just gonna be open space where the army corps is, is wetlands? So you're, you, so if you get approval, you're gonna go on the road, you're not back.
But they're, they're out, I mean, they'll be gone, you know, all integrated. So we also have a little bit of, sorry, we have a little bit of there. It's also in the same status with those three blue lots that are just down from the green pond area, the lift. Those are in the same boat. Okay, and so this is just the cascade of removing the single fan lots and and offsetting them with some townhomes. And we just kind of work our way through. Down at the bottom of the third section, you'll see a balance of a hundred and nine thousand dollars in in the Nibbly, Nibbly City Ledger and a negative three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in the West Eight's column. And and that's where we kind of ran out of room. So to offset that, to be able to kind of sell this to our investors, even though it looks completely outwashed in the city's favor, I started putting the kind of the intangibles there and trying to assign it. So the first one is the value of using the east side of the town. And then there's the value of time for the move lots. Just address that. The value of time for the move lots, I'm just guessing, and the Corps may ever decide to to do their job and allow us to do, to build those townhomes. I believe that it will happen at some point in future, but I don't know if it's five years, three years, ten years, who knows? So I threw a value in that. There is a value for us to be able to move ahead. So let me go back to the value of using the east side of the townhome. Can you go back to the drawing, Levi? Can we budget just somewhere for a laser pointer?
Yeah, one, I don't know, I don't know if it's gonna work very well for you, but. I don't think it's working for you, though. You, you gotta push down really hard. Just don't break it.
Okay, so basically, right here, right, we have this road, this road hasn't changed. The alignment of this road is exactly the same. But in in our first version, I had this cul-de-sac slid over so that the back of the lots, the back of these single family lots was right here. And then we had a row of single-sided, a row of lots right here that fronted onto this future nine hundred. And what I've done is I've slid this cul-de-sac over to the right and then have been able to use this. And so what I just, what I said was, look, there's some value in us not having to build a separate road to service these, these townhomes. And so I assigned a value to that. Um, the road itself, like Levi mentioned right here, it's a master planned road with this rough alignment and we were you know, we follow this. This is roughly what's shown on your transportation master plan with that swoop in it. And then I I believe you got a road over here somewhere, sure, I can't, I don't know where, but somewhere over here. Um, and so we suggested, well, maybe we just dedicate this because we will no longer have any lots fronting on that. It's actually a little bit of a detriment there. It's the same situation we're in right here where you have the thirty-two hundred, some backside of those lots. This road, I don't think will be nearly as busy as thirty-two hundred, but in the future, I don't think so. But that's, that's that trade-off. So, um, can you go back, sorry?
We go back to that road, sorry. So were you, were you, were you able to have that road?
We, we had lots that 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 accessed off of that road before.
So you would build that half?
And so we, yeah, we had that, we had the half dedication and, oh, it was actually a little more than half. It was half plus ten or, I think it was half plus, I'm not sure. Whatever it was, that's.
Yeah, you you have to have twenty feet of of asphalt and nor on the the street, I think, is, well, is it thirty-five feet of asphalt? So it's a little bit, a little bit more, because it's a collector road, so.
So you were going to have to build the road. Are you saying, are we saying you won't have to build that road now? Well?
That's, that's what there is. Yeah. Yeah, we'll get into that more, but, yeah.
Lots that, that would be using them. So both of them that we dedicate the plan.
But not dedicate the road, just the land.
It's built only.
Not build the road, yeah. That's what they've requested.
Just like designing on the fly, but is there any chance you couldn't just curve that road and hit the cul-de-sac and make that cul-de-sac a through road and solve the same problem? Follow me?
There is probably no reason why we couldn't. That is actually I don't, some event, it it won't, it'll no longer straddle. I think the original goal here was, that's a property line between us and our neighbors. And the goal was to straddle that as it comes down. And so if that was the goal down to the south, then it would have to swoop at some point right here and get back on the line so that one guy's not eating that. But we, it would, we could do that. We could get rid of this, scooch these over and and possibly even take up part of that s- swoop right here. Leave a cul-de-sac in there, is that what you're thinking? We leave the cul-de-sac in and then and then swoop one and out of that so that you still have the turnaround ability?
I don't think you need the cul-de-sac. Is that, you, you, you're just, you're just saying it just dead ends there.
I just think that's an idea that needs investigating. I don't wanna hash the details right now. I think we can work through that.
I hadn't thought of that.
Well, I think the reason that alignment was chosen in the master plan is because it lines up very well as you continue to the south. We look at this and just this perspective.
Yeah, absolutely right.
It would make sense to do that, but we're looking at a master plan that actually continues to the south, so making that adjustment couldn't work and you're gonna lose four lots.
But if I were to swoop out into this.
Yeah, what if it, what if it ended up over there? It could potentially work.
I think we, I'm happy to look at that. I think that's a good idea. I don't, if it works, it works. I hadn't thought of that.
Currently, the two properties to the south of this are owned by the same individuals.
Uh, Robles?
Yeah, I think as you go south, I think that alignment is is important. Our our park, our park, uh, on our park master plan, you know, where where the regional park is, this, this road aligns with the western edge of it. And we, we kind of, we planned around that, having that that access of that road. But I mean, I guess if you get there.
All right, let's keep going.
Okay, so, um, this, the the parking stalls was um, a contribution towards the parking stalls. That was the last minute. Uh, these were all last minute zingers, I think, from Norm.
Yeah.
So these were contributions towards that, the the parking, there was no, and still is no design on the, on the park. And so there's no really way to build them and ensure that they're actually usable and not gonna be in the wrong place. So that was, that was a contribution towards. This was a contribution towards as well to those. I don't even know that, and I believe I brought this up last time, where park will now extend all the way uh, in Hawk Hollow to the north, it'll extend to the road on the west, it'll extend our road to the south, it'll extend. If this goes through, it'll extend to the trail on the old eleven hundred alignment on the east. So whether that's necessary or not, I don't, I don't know. And then the restroom and associated utility stubs was, this was also a contribution towards the, towards the restroom, because again, it wasn't gonna be built, it was just gonna be part of whatever gets designed there. So that kind of brings the balance a little more in line. And again, these are kind of nebulous numbers. These aren't, these are kind of fixed, but these are kind of nebulous numbers up here. But it was an attempt to get this back more recently in line. Uh, I I think now it shows a little bit in our favor. It's, it's a little hard when we come up with, true. So i- if there's an easy adjustment, you know, with something up in here that would make this pretty close to exactly even. But that's the, that's the gist of it.
So if I, if I could just get into real quick the the staff's recommendation and and planning commission was, was the same. Um, they, the pl- planning commission went uh, in line with with staff's recommendation. It is approval of of this ordinance, this this uh, amendment to the development agreement, but with uh, the following conditions and and findings. So uh, the developer would be required to build a half road of the master plan at her West Street on Southwest corner of the development. Uh, the re, this is a requirement of Nibbly City Code within our subdivision ordinance to build master planned streets of the, that are uh, within, within a subdivision. Uh, although it, it doesn't service those lots, it it would benefit this development in the long term to to have that road there so that believe the justification's there for for this exaction for for nine hundred west. So, uh, we're recommending that that remain a requirement to build that half road. Uh, uh, these next two are are related. So the developer uh, must coordinate with Hawk Hollow developments on their findings and U S A C O E determination requirements regarding wetland adjacent to bypass pipe. And the developer must construct bypass piping run along the north of the city park in its entirety at the east boundary at twelve hundred west. So their their schematic shows a pipe. Maybe I'll just go back, um. And Tom, if you wanna chime in on this, you can, if I'm off base on anything, but I'll just X here so I can use my cursor, but but what, what uh, city engineer, Tom, has has uh, recommended is that they would be required to extend this pipe, which they show right here on the edge of this uh, stormwater pond out, out to the east, um, to to the edge of this property. So that would be a, a change from what's, what's on that plan. Recommended condition of approval. So the findings are the proposed amendments compliant with uh, Nibbly City Code, uh, nineteen point thirty-two at the time that the original development was applied for. Proposed amendment is compliant with Nibbly City Code nineteen thirty-two oh five oh, which requires that thirty-five percent of net developable acres is required to be used for amenities in open space. So we didn't discuss this uh, previously, but the developer has provided figures and numbers to show, you know, with this reconfiguration, they, they, they still meet the minimum open space requirement. Um, Nibbly City Recode, code requires the improvement of an inner west master planned street within the development. And the decreased required improvements of the park space are offset by proposed stormwater improvements and increased park dedication. So we can get into any questions you have or, but just wanted to give you the whole picture of what's, what's being proposed. So we can get into any questions you have or, but just wanted to give you the whole picture of what's, what's being proposed. Uh, I, actually I wanted to add one thing. So although the planning commission, uh, they, they did recommend. Approval that this, with these conditions in line with staff's recommendation, there was. There was a point that was brought up on, on that half road, uh, that. The commissioner Obrey asked me to, to just bring up to the, the group and. And that's, and that's this, this half road that it's really inefficient for development to have, to have. This type of configuration. So they, they, they did. Discuss and explore whether, whether the road needed to be in this location. They didn't talk about, you know, Justin's idea of moving it over here. But, uh, they, they, they did deliberate on that. That item of, of whether the road needed to be specifically in that location or not. Um, from staff's perspective. There is, there is a reason and a value that it is there. It was there in the original plans and. Although, you know, maybe if there were another proposal in front of us for, for what's, what's being proposed here. Staff recommends that, that, that road, uh. Not, not just be dedicated as a public right of way, but be improved.
Well, they follow us in manholes.
Later on the agenda, right? But yeah. You say we won't go after some, huh?
But there's a couple of questions, uh, for whoever, uh, what, what is the. The area of the pond that Nibbly Meadows doesn't have to build is how big?
It has one point three five acres.
One point three five acres. And so just land for land, then. Uh, Nibbly Meadows dedicates about one and a change of land to the city park. So that's kind of a wash. Land for land. Land that Nibbly Meadows doesn't have to build a pond on because it's now in a regional pond. And then about that same amount of area would be given to the city for this park we're trying to put together there. Tom?
That pond that shade green is already constructed.
As part of this, this, uh, breakdown on the cost is deconstructing that. Piping through it to the new regional pond that will be on the other side of twelve hundred west. But it's about an acre and a quarter land for land, but there is some work to make it usable.
Just the. Change that. Loss of. Individually planted footprints for townhomes. Come into this whole picture. I mean, I'll, I'll tell you, I, I believe that. Home ownership is a great benefit to the community, even if it's a footprint of land underneath a townhome. That this would relieve Nibbly Meadows of that requirement. How does trading? Land for a part, for land that you don't have to do a storm detention basin on. How, how does this, how does that change, change this home ownership question? Is it just because it's worth more money that way?
The individually planted lots on the south?
Yes.
Versus one overall.
Right.
Um, well, it was always our intent to have the south. Part of the development as, as a rental project.
So there's no change there?
There's no change in, in what we intended to do with it, but there is, there, there was a requirement and at the time. It wasn't as that big of an impediment to us, but with the current financial state with interest rates. It, it's basically, we, at the time, we could have gone to an insurance company or for, to private, um, lenders. For, um, long-term financing there. But this, we, it's basically you're down the HUD at this point, as far as your financing option. As far as our financing option goes for, for a viable project. So, uh, with HUD, the Bellwether, our intermediary lender there, um. They have confirmed that HUD will not underwrite a loan unless it's on one parcel. So if, if the intent never changed for us, it, this, the financial conditions. Have made it to where it's very difficult. So i- if we, if we didn't do that, if we individually planted those, it would likely. Uh, be held by a bunch of different investors. It's, it's just, it's more efficient. It's, it's better. To me, it's a better long-term project. For us as a rental project to have it all in one piece, under one umbrella. It's, well, it'll be professionally managed. It's, uh. It's, it's just a better way to have the asset in our portfolio. It's just. It's tough the other way. I think it's better under one umbrella too.
Yeah, I mean, there would still be an HOA umbrella, no matter what.
So we have, yeah, we have an HOA o- over the whole thing. Um, this will function somewhat under the HOA and somewhat independently there. Uh, which brings me back to the clubhouse. I, I should have brought this up before the clubhouse. When we originally discussed it, that was always a requirement when we hit whatever, I believe I said two hundred units was. That we had the option to build a clubhouse or a splash pad or a pool. It was, you've got a list that we can pick from. So the discussion was always that we would have the option, but we didn't intend at the time to build a clubhouse. So we had the option of, if we didn't build our own clubhouse, that we would have to contribute towards a splash pad in the park. That option, optionality was reflected in one development agreement, the other. So they are a little bit in opposition, but, um. The. The proposal is that we have that option.
Okay, I'll hold off for a bit. Yeah. So, I had a thought in some of these numbers like in public restroom for sixty thousand. I wish that last one cost us to build.
But it seems like it was only a portion of that and part of the building department wasn't just the whole thing there. See, that would have been twenty twenty, I see.
Maybe I'd be in motion to put sixty thousand towards the bathroom. So it wasn't specific.
Some of these is kind of similar to your homeownership. Remember the original one, obviously it's going to be rentals. You're getting a bed for the whole, for the city and splash pad in the park. Or a clubhouse and only serve a few with a splash pad and serve, you know, enjoy the city. Now, I'm not giving it, I'm ending this event, city just for appeal. Uh, in this one. You know, I don't know if I, and I don't like the idea of seeing a bar seat. This is supposed to be a residential development. Which in my mind signifies a change. So. Some of the city rentals may be like a planner. I mean, I think for me at this point to approve it the way it is. There would have to be something, I think it's a deed restrictions or something to make. Their event, a greater benefit of homeownership on some of these townhomes or something that would benefit the community in March. Before I'd be willing to swallow this one.
I'll, I'll talk to the splash pad maybe a little bit, just briefly. But I think we already realized. It was going to be darn hard to get a splash pad on the amount of money that was going to be. Dedicated by Nibbly Meadows to a splash pad. So this council had already decided that it would be. Splash pad for this amount of money, which was impossible to build or fee in lieu of. So. I mean, I, I agree with you. It is, it does seem like it's trading a. Fee in lieu of is still a public amenity. As opposed to a clubhouse that's a private amenity.
I don't think it is, but the, the windy road of townhomes have a little more section there. Um, I remember there was a stormwater pond to be finding those townhomes. Is that still needed with the chains?
Uh, yeah, there were, there are two of them, yeah, right?
Nope. I don't know that that happened.
I didn't see that calculated, so I was confirming.
That the, the state, there's one right now.
Wow.
Are you pushing a button, Travis, or?
If this pond right here has been built, it is going to stay. This pond right here has been built, it's going to stay. This, this, this is that bigger wetland there. I suspect that right here. It's still going to be wetland. There is a legitimate wet area right here of the border. That's where they, Tom was talking about that we would coordinate with the core of engineers going through there. So that discharge from these ponds here that we will still have in operation will go to that pipe as well. Uh, one thing about this, I, I just think a huge benefit is that this parcel here just becomes completely open, not just to this parcel. But to this entire length of trail line. It's just a huge opening.
My concerns about the trail mill too, I love it, but.
Uh, well, there's pipe underneath there.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, the, the alignment's already there. And there's pipe, there's two pipes flooded underneath there. In fact. Trail. Be by has beat it out of us, um. Uh, so we'll be moving that trail. But yeah, and, and Tom and I, in fact, walked with today and talked about the vertical alignment of that.
Yes, please, sorry.
I've stated before, I'll say it again. I'm not sad to see a splash pad go. I need splash pads.
Say them all with kids.
You can only use them two month of the year. Those are the only times more of the season, so. Um, so a clubhouse instead is good for the neighborhood. What kind of things does it have in a clubhouse?
Maybe give him that. Just put it on there. Should have worked.
We should stop changing the batteries.
Look, I can. It was like this. Okay, sorry.
Are in a clubhouse.
Uh, it's, it's. Kitchen, kitchen area will have exercise room in there. It usually has a. It corral kind of thing.
It generates an HOA in reserve to use it.
That was the intent of your ordinance to begin with, is. Is that those satisfy.
And that's, that's not on your face.
It's shown.
It's shown right there.
So. Uh, and then you mentioned, um, part of this proposition was to decrease it by twenty five parking stalls. Um, because, but still parking lot is right.
So the, the parking stall that we're talking about, we're, we're contributing some money, but, but nobody knows. Where they are. The thing, the things that we have completed that we require to do. Is not just build a half plus ten along here, but build the entire roadway. Sorry, but build the entire wing. And provide the utility. Those are in. So.
They fully admit I might be seeing it incorrectly. Did we start a conversation with, hey, it seems like a good idea that instead of. Everyone in this part of town building their own stormwater facilities, Nibbly City could take that on. Do a regional stormwater facility and that would be a win-win for everybody. But that conversation seems to have turned into. It's somehow not good for Nibbly Meadows and therefore they need, Nibbly Meadows needs. More entitlements, more density, more, uh. No fee in lieu of, no, I mean, that, 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 that what seemed like was going to be a win-win. On stormwater turned into a, a, a liability. To Nibbly Meadows and that's why you're here asking to be, to have that liability mitigated.
Somewhat, somewhat that, that is the case. Um, you know, we had built, we, we have this pond, we have this pond. We built this pond, um. I, I think a huge win for the city in this regionalization effort. Just because of how far advanced we already were in construction was the ability to pass through and have, have bigger pipes that, that. That take the areas up to the east. And, and, and send them through. So it's bigger, the, the benefit to the city, I believe, is bigger than, than the Nibbly Meadows portion. And so I, I think the downside to this whole approach is that when you have these smaller detention ponds. They're attenuating these gigantic peaks of flow. So that you're not taking this whole slug of stormwater through, you're putting it into a pond. And then that's metering it out at a much lower flow rate. So the pipes that are required for that are much smaller. But if you're just sending raw stormwater event flow and no attenuation through a, a pond from the east. Then the pipes are much bigger and much bigger is much more expensive. And that's what we're dealing with here as we dramatically upsize those pipes and have provided pipes through there that. That weren't there before at, at a much larger size. So. If, if the city wanted to just do, we're trying to figure out a way to, to pay for this.
Yeah, and so my question for the city is. For all this mitigation, increased density, all this, whatever it takes to offset the liability of bigger pipes. Is it really a win for the city still? I mean, why not? The, the pond's built. Why not just stick with it?
And that is an option. They, they wouldn't have to make any changes whatsoever to the design that was approved. I think the benefit to the city is both. Gaining that extra acre and a quarter. Then it's congruent to the Hawk Hollow and that's, I think that's the biggest benefit that we're seeing there. The regional. To me, one of the benefits is if you think of all the issues and all the problems we had across the city with stormwater, with complaints and it's these, it's these little ponds. It is true that they attenuate and they soften the blow.
It's these little ponds, that is true that they attenuate and they soften the blow of stormwater ponds, but. Or stormwater flows, but they're a royal pain, they're a royal pain for Rod, they're a royal pain for everybody to take care of and maintain, so. I personally, this is Justin Mon speaking. Appreciate the fact of getting to a regional pond, it's much easier to maintain, it's easier to handle, and in this case. It's already wet, it's already a wetland. And people expect it, they know it's there, it's not gonna be a major complaint, as opposed to having. A whole bunch of ponds through the east of here and these developments to have to maintain and take care of. So, so to your point of whether or not. It's a win-win for everybody, I. I, I think there's probably a little, a little bit of give we would need to make this all happen.
Can, can I back up just one second? For me, it, it, this looks like a lot of moving parts and pieces. And, and maybe it is, but the overall, the overall development here. Was approved at a time when the RPV maximum density was twelve. The original was approved at six point two five units to the acre. Almost half of what the maximum approval rate would be. We're, we're requesting that it go in, in all these moving parts and pieces, and then it go from six point two five. This, as designed, six point seven five. That's what we're seeing here, is a, a shift from six point two five to six point seven five. The maximum number of townhomes was at eighty percent. Uh, the approved plan had it at fifty-six percent. And this now takes it to sixty-five percent. Still all well, well, well below. The limits that were set under the time of approval of this, so even though this looks like a massive shift in, in. Pieces and parts within the development. There's still. There's still. We have townhomes where the townhomes were in phase three, we have townhomes where the townhomes were in phase four, there's a, a little bit of shift, but. To go from six point two five units to the acre to six point seven five units to the acre. Even though there's a lot of little bits and pieces and moving parts in here, it, it, it seems.
Well, that's, that's fair, that's a fair point, I wanna come back to maintenance on stormwater ponds. I, I think Nibbly Meadows is on the hook to maintain the pond that's already built. There's two hundred thousand dollars worth of maintenance in perpetuity, now are you gonna say? That we can't actually make people maintain their stormwater ponds? Am I reading your mind?
Yeah, I mean, think of how many, how many ponds have we rebuilt? Since I came to Nibbly.
No, before Tom got here.
Since Justin Mon came to Nibbly City. Ten years ago, how many stormwater ponds have we rebuilt? Because they're too wet, they're pain in the butt. And, and my. I'll come back to that later, but I. To me, it makes more sense to put on, how many complaints have we had about the first big golf course? I'm not aware of any. Uh, so to, to answer your question very directly, yes, Nibbly City is very wet. It has a very high groundwater table and all these small little ponds. Are a thorn. And are difficult. And account for a lot of problem and a lot of time. For the city.
I agree, I also think it looks like a very expensive proposition to rebuild upon that's already built.
Yeah.
You're to rebuild the green one? What, what are you, what are you talking about?
Well, I'm looking at your ledger that says it's. Hundreds of thousands of dollars to upsize the pipe and.
Oh.
Three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Oh, but, but, yeah, but it's not, this is not. You're not talking about the pipe that just services. This, it would be this pipe here, this is, this is, this is one pipe right here. That, that extends to here. Uh, and then this pipe goes through to over here, this pipe. Here is a big expense that goes up here that would take in this whole, the area up to the east. So it's not just that we're. Trading a, a big expensive pipe for our pond, our single pond. It's opening up an area where they would not have to have ponds and you would be able to. Deal with them on their impact to your. To your capacity in your improved wetland, regional pond.
Is them?
Whoever develops to the east.
Yeah, I, I mean, it looks to me like we're. And I'm part of the problem, slow and realizing that. We should be doing huge master ponds. No, Tom, we shouldn't, okay, well, I'll leave it at that. There's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of impact mitigation that we need. Apparently we're, we, we, we need to or expected to do. Because of it, a, a trade of about one point two five acres for one point two five acres.
In this case, we already have that area. We have the wetland, city owns it. Be, it's really minimal. To make a little bit, but if we're talking citywide. To buy land and to build pond like that, we looked at that earlier, just not too long. It's really pricey to do that, but in this case, we already have that area and we already own the land, so we're not having to purchase that or acquire that.
So if I could, it seems like what we need maybe is some more detail and, and now some of the numbers, because.
I've probably seen. Or. I, I think we're trying, we, we might. We might be trying to put two final point on. Because again, my big statement, I'm saying, tell me where I'm wrong, it seems like. For whatever's been built, hasn't been built, this changes, that doesn't change, this changes. We're really trading one and a half, one point two five acres of. A stormwater pond for one point two five acres of park space. That's to me, the, the thing that started this whole conversation and led to all the fine points. And I'm not sure that trade justifies. Too much analysis, because I'm perhaps treating it too simply, but it's one point two five acres for one point two five acres.
Well, and I think you could blame staff on getting into the numbers, because we, we wanted, we wanted to, we wanted to present the whole picture. To the council and be able to justify the decision. So we asked, we asked the applicant to come up with these ledgers to say. What are you getting? Now, we didn't necessarily ask. To get into the profitability of townhomes versus single family, but they, they, they brought those to it, they brought kind of their whole. You know, the whole financial picture and. But yeah, gets complicated.
And so. We had a development agreement. Under a certain set of ordinances, and Travis, you're right, uh, you had a proposal that did not. Stretch the limits at all, or even come close to the limits of the ordinance that was in place then. But we've changed that ordinance and we've changed it for a reason. And in fact, we, I can say, we changed it in part to encourage TDR, I mean, we had a reason to. Be less aggressive on density, to be, um. More conservative on density unless we went through the TDR process, so whatever the reason was that we went from. Something that was this big and you only went this big. We said, there's a good reason, the council said, there's a good reason for us to go this big. And now you're saying because we started this big, maybe we should go from here to this big. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I, I, I disagree with your hand.
Well, you haven't seen all my handles.
But to go from, to go, yes, it, it was this big. What was allowed and we were roughly half of that, we're now going to this, so the six point.
No, I wasn't to scale.
So, six point two five to six point seven five on the density and sixty to sixty-five percent on, on the townhomes.
Fair enough.
I mean, to, to me, it'll seem minor, I don't necessarily agree with your. One, one point three five acres of this, that, that's not the exact trade, because. I don't think you're looking at what would happen in the future without it. Up to the east, so what we're doing is making provisions by, by running this pipe through. We're, it's a lot more land up to the east that will no longer have to be developed. As those little mini ponds.
So that's a benefit to a future developer.
Right, but you have the inability to charge whatever you want for the buy-in for that. The buy-in, the utilization of the regional swing.
I suspect there's a nexus thing.
I'm, I'm sure there is. Sure there is, there's gotta be a reasonable nexus to it. That. The, the, the city can be made, this is, this is a normal. Cost to the city, this is just simply allowing some trades and showing to our. Our investors that even though this looks skewed in the city's favor. Uh, this, this, we. We want, we wanna be a good team player and overall, I believe this is better for us. I believe it's better for the city.
Okay, that, that point is taken, uh. But only if we follow through on it. Like. You guys don't, you're not, you're not, whoever comes along later to the east, to the whatever, develop property, it's like. Go build your own storm, or in fact, let's pass an ordinance that says you can't build your own stormwater because. It's not a good idea. From an engineering point of view. See, you guys work that out, because I see two different head nods.
May, maybe to address your other point, Mayor, on, on the new, on the new ordinance with. With TDR and, and lowering those thresholds. I do think for a subdivision that has already started construction that's. Designed around it, it is a little bit difficult to go back and, and fit. Our existing code into a model that was built around a code previously. And so you can freeze it in time and say, no, just keep it the same. Um, but if you wanna make adjustments, it's. That's, that's difficult and a little bit impractical, because.
Right, and, and I don't think we should hold, if we. I don't think we should hold Nibbly Meadows to the new ordinance necessarily. But we had a deal. Under the old ordinance. And now. Nibbly Meadows is asking for a new deal.
On our behalf, on our request.
Yeah, I'm still trying to figure that part out, I mean, if it's all about trying to make money off of. Stormwater detention ponds on future development to the east, well, that, that is a number I'd like to know.
I don't think it's about making money, I think it's about dealing with the problem, dealing with the issue. And think of how many ways we have to raise money and deal with stormwater issues. As compared to how many issues and how many ways do we have to make money on built parks?
Yeah, I don't mean make money like a for-profit organization, I mean, solve the stormwater, stormwater problem. And charge the people that are causing. Us the need to solve that stormwater problem appropriately. Tom?
Just to be clear, there is no stormwater problem on this. We vetted this thing, true and true. When, from the very get-go, we said, build your pond.
Yeah.
Find this groundwater, make sure we're not in it. Then we were addressing all these things as we were building. Any adjustments as we're building, so we're, we're not inheriting these, these issues nor is the development. This is actually the first one that's actually worked since I've been here.
And that's credit to city staff, it's credit to engineering on Nibbly Meadows part two, so I appreciate. People on both sides of the table there. Yes, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be quiet now.
The regional, the future regional pond. How, how much more development, developments could it take care of, like? It would be able to take all this stormwater and hawk all and. And then how many, how much other development could actually take stormwater from? Take like another development of this size? Or more than, like, how much benefit are we gonna get in terms of number of houses and neighborhoods?
Don't remember.
Roughly, I'd lead to nine hundred, just like in between ninth and eighth-ish. So anything, just.
And this? The rigs too?
Yeah, the rigs as well.
And alcohol, it's, it's kind of all that open space in the east, all to six forty.
Then the pipes were designed to.
So you're asking about the pipes, are these, um, eighteen inch?
So there's a forty-eight inch line going underneath twelve hundred west. Through here, I believe it's a thirty or thirty-six. Through Hawk Hollow, there was, there's someone that's coming down, there's twenty-four that goes to forty-two and then hits that. Forty-eight going underneath twelve hundred, so it's a lot of work. And we're. Thanks to the approval, it's twenty-five fourteen for first reading.
They have a motion and a second problem, that's a motion from. Name of the second from Norm to approve. This ordinance for first reading.
It's disgusting. Maybe, we've worked a lot of. Effort in making this park bigger, bigger, to me, maybe just talk to Chad or stuff and see, like, alright, what can we do in this, I mean, nothing. Give us like a little bit, are we gonna just do a soccer field, I think you're one, 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 two acres, you. Soccer field and. Thought it was nice stadium seating around it. Um, but anyways, sure, we got a purpose for all this.
Yes, I'll just add on to that, one of the things for staff that. One of the things that's new is we now have an open space. Master plan, recreation plan, when we take open space, we take, and there's criteria that we use. I would say, Norm, I'd like to see the Parks and Recreation Committee go through that process. Using our plan for open space and parks, so there's five things indicated in there that we're supposed to look at before taking them. Um, which includes priority mapping, which this area is. Includes maintenance and costs. Includes the comparable development cost. Some other things like that, so I'd love to see Parks and Rec do that, I don't know, planning zoning needs to as well. But just getting insight from them.
Yeah, at this point, we've, we've done that at staff, is that something we could do at staff level? Or are you saying we need to take that to committees? Because we, that's, that's kind of an analysis of. Um, okay.
Yeah, um. Things to think about, Aaron started to touch on this, about the trade-offs. Um. In that survey of. Creating that plan, one of the most requested amenities was, by far and away, splash pad. And removing that, among the lowest. By far and away was clubhouses and event spaces, and so we're trading the opposite of what citizens have told us they want. Again, one of the things in that plan that we're supposed to consider is what our citizens want, so. Is the trade we're making. According to our plan. Um, I don't think that's something staff has to do, it's something we just have to think about. Specifically, um. Let's talk about that. Let's talk about that. I think it'd be a.
Yeah, um, Travis, how are your feelings about football courts? Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know if you like, yeah, you can, pickleball courts instead of clubhouse, that's a personal preference.
Still probably.
So you're asking for that specifically? Are you thinking? If Travis likes pickleball courts, do you like them? If Travis likes pick-a-ball courts, do you like them as public amenities or private amenities? That is the point.
Thank you.
I promised Tom, if I could just interject that, I promised Tom that I would bring up. That you did double the impact fees with ours since we had this. Bring it up every chance I get. I promised him I'd do it again, so. Just so you know.
And you said as long.
Tried to talk him out of it, but.
So for first reading, it's gonna put back three weeks. Is this gonna slow your, your development or anything?
Hey, another, another thing, maybe before second reading, put, put heads together. You already said it. I'm just recapping the location of that. Dedication of right-of-way or road in the. South east corner.
Eric, pushing for mostly Levi, I believe, um. Her proposal for us is basically, uh, we have to put in piping stuff, so we. Want to change entitlements, a little more density. Twenty-two more townhouses. Uh, Mayor alluded to, we've changed some ordinances since this was first approved because we want to inspire some things like T D R. And don't think that the level is on scale, but do we have conversations or look into. Instead of just trading density, actually having a T D R discussion of buying. Whether from the city or someone else to increase the density here. Is that, are we, is it, is it too miniscule?
For that number, for that number of units. I guess it depends what your baseline is, because if your baseline's five units. I, I. Yeah, how do we, how do we start that is the question, because I, I don't know how we start from five units if they were already entitled to. Six and a quarter, but if we, if we add the twenty-two units, I, I don't know if it's too miniscule.
I don't know.
How much, how much, so. T D R credits on twenty-two units. What that might take. Is that kind of what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe it's also a little bit. And it feels kind of small, but. I'd have to work it up.
Well, it's. It's about, if it's city space, it's about four acres. Because it's five units per acre for, for a. Recreational space. If it's non-recreational, it's three. So it would be. If you develop rights for four acres. If, if, if we're using that, again, if that's. If you think that's appropriate, but.
Let me. They're just giving us.
Okay.
Buy some well, I assume we could.
I think in the end that, that, that could. I guess further complicate this spreadsheet. Yeah, put more in there. Yeah.
It would start with second. Eric, in the. Probably. Spend my time, not me, instead of yours.
Yeah.
Something, yeah.
No.
Ready for vote on the first reading? I see that as a yes. Seeing no opposition to a vote, I'll call for a vote. This would be to approve, uh, this second amendment for first reading. Bring it back from second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank, thank you, Travis.
Yeah, thank you.
I am dying for a drink of water.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Cheryl's dying. We didn't get your waters. Dang it. I knew we forgot something. Yeah.
As residential and there's one vacant vacant property on the backside. And the applicants propose or is is proposing to. Adjust the boundary between Nibley and Logan annex into Nibley City. Primarily because of access to utilities. Which are much more readily available here than they are in Logan City as they they're. They're planning on developing a landscape business on this property. They currently operate. They they ran a property in just north of here. And they and they they like to, you know, expand into this area. And so. Just as a little background, this this is in Nibley's annexation declaration area. At up to this point, Logan City's indicated that they're cooperative with this boundary adjustment. So just a little little bit more context of where it's located there on the highway. So the property. To the south, that's a residential property and there's a smaller one to the north. There's really just two property owners here and they both signed on to this. This boundary adjustment. This is the plat that they've they've proposed, the applicant. For this area. And when we look at zoning, so this this was. Vetted by Planning Commission from zoning standpoint at their at their last meeting. And and so as far as zoning goes, the future land use map designates this area as commercial. Land use goal one really emphasizes balancing different uses, commercial, residential, light industrial. In suitable locations and and then there's this commercial economic development goal to create and maintain sustainable economic base for Nibley City. It'll provide tax revenues and increase local employment and convenience of shopping. The the applicant has has proposed a commercial zone. And staff feels this is this is right in line with the general plan. Is and as well as Planning Commission. Staff's recommendation is approval of this ordinance. To adjust the boundaries between the two municipalities and. Adding these areas into. Into Nibley City as well as zoning these properties as commercial. Commission's recommendation is approval of of the zone designation. And with the findings that the proposed commercial zone is consistent with commercial designation, the city's adopted future land use map. And the zoning designation would support commercial economic development goal two that I've mentioned previously. The applicants here, if you have any question for them. And that's it.
I'd like to meet the applicant, please. In fact. Let's open the public hearing and let's include. Whatever you want to say in the public hearing. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's great. I understand.
Right, we're gonna hear you one way or another.
So my name is BJ Smith. I am. The applicant is radically fast flowing properties. I am on my point and it's this can't be escalated. It's immediate. In in Nibley City, that's very experienced and qualified. City and we purchased this property a few years ago. It's been a long kind of patient road getting. All the parties involved in cities and municipalities have the same vision, which this makes a lot of sense because we're adjacent to. The commercial park that's already there that, you know, including some other buildings are the end. And so. We would come in, you know, whether coming to the city and develop a commercial building that would be. You know, similar to. That type of location and zoning and it would look even better than what we have now. We don't have. We don't own enough properties, so it makes sense to invest infrastructure to. Put in, you know. Fancy or. So and then the long, long term plan would be, you know, maybe thirty years after I retire, there's some more commercial warehouses. We get in our own place and not be renting it. So welcome to answer any questions.
Because it's part of the public hearing, we suspect, just. Tell us your address, just because it's. You don't have to.
My house, yeah.
Where you live.
I live in Utah.
Okay.
And we operate. In the town of San Diego, twenty nine six.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yep, same. And. The next item after the public hearing is actually discussion and consideration of this. You'll be around for that if we have other questions. Or you want to take part in that discussion, we will give you that as well. Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other public from the comment on this matter of the Nibley Logan boundary? With that, I will close the public hearing. And let's move to the next item. This is discussion and consideration of the same. You have anything else to say, Levi?
No.
Okay, thanks. Councilor Church.
We have a question for.
Please.
Yeah. So you're doing the commercial, are you doing the open to the public and still stop or is it being this. Landscape that you use to operate with?
So the the official intent initial. Be consistent with our current operations, which is we don't. Open publicly to these that building. The city did ask and we were to modify for ADA standards in case there was visitors. Our foot traffic looks like occasionally, once a week, someone drops by to drop a payment or. Time for a proposed investment or bid. Services, but we sell out now long term. We potentially look at that, this location, but. Selling landscape materials is a shorter season than doing the landscaping. So I'm trying to find ways to extend my season, not shorten it. So it's. At this point in my career, it's not on my roadmap. I actually operate some other other businesses. And I'm choosing to put my focus on those than more than necessarily expanding service lines. But I don't want to say I'll never do that. It it seems like. A logical fit. So one thing I should mention, I meant to earlier is someone asked in the commission, there is a house on. The property, there's an older, like another farmhouse on on the. On the highway side that currently has been a rental. It was it was a previous rental by the Andersons. We maintained that as a rental. And, you know, that house would be need to be, we got to figure out how we're going to propose that to the city. One would be to still continue that as a rental in addition to the building we would build.
Nathan, we have motion to approve speaking. Ordinance twenty five sixteen and wave. Like first. Or second, we.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? And that that's from Norm. And the motion and second is to approve the boundary. Adjustment and wave second B. Um. I should have read this already. Are we assigning zoning as this comes in?
Yes.
Commercial and so is that where we have a conflict between existing uses and what is. Permitted in the commercial zone?
Yes, they would be legally, they would be legally nonconforming uses. Right, yes. Yes, yep.
So even if it's. So it's a legally, a legally nonconforming use if it's annexed to the city with that use established?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Cause it was, I mean, it was legal one way or another. Yeah.
So I'm glad you asked that. The property in Anderson is zero zero two eight, want to go commercial? Was there discussion about? The different zone for them?
No, I mean, we you you could if you wanted to, but. They've. And 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 you can, you can speak to this if you want, BJ, cause a lot of this just came through the application. We didn't talk with them specifically, but. But the zoning was proposed as commercial for the whole area with from the applicants.
I I and they signed the permit, even though technically I guess with my percentages, I could. I I've worked with, um, they did sign it and from the time which we purchased the land, they do that. Like from a. They of course want to continue their use and live there as long as they. Can, which would be. So they decide to sell, but to to them it makes sense and they understand that. The future of this is a commercial corridor and at one point when they decide to. Move or sell that that would likely be the result and they're fine with that.
So implications for an owner that goes from what they're currently whatever they're current to a commercial, from what I understand to be. I have property tax rate, is that correct or no?
I've heard that as, yeah. Yeah, it can't, it it can increase. Property taxes for them. I know there's a lot of factors there, but. With the use and, yeah.
If it's higher, then you know, it's cool. Even talk to the assessor.
Yeah, I mean, I guess there's a trade off there, right? I mean, you get additional value for it being a commercial property. You get additional property tax.
What's that?
I think he's unincorporated. You know, that's a little outside of my expertise, to be honest.
Actually shows Nibley City corporate boundary. Including Gordon's zero 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 seven. Am I looking at that map correctly?
This is the plot map.
Yeah.
This doesn't have Gordon's property. His, well, his, you can see his property for reference to the south, because it does border as. That's, yeah, this is, this is Gordon around it, Gordon Zillis, but. That I think that's an error on the map. Good catch. Maybe we have them. I don't know if if we didn't catch that, I'm not sure if the county surveyor would, but but that. That isn't. I mean, that that would be, that is the proposed Nibley City corporate boundary. So maybe that's, maybe that's what that's indicating.
But not in this proposal.
It is, because it would be this, this is. You see my cursor, this would be the the city boundary right here. Right? So this is now, this is Logan, but we're moving ours to include all of that. So that's our new corporate boundary.
So what's? Side of eighty nine ninety one, it's fine print. Go down, go left.
New Logan City corporate boundary. Oh, so yeah, maybe maybe that does. Maybe that does need to be fixed to say new Nibley City corporate boundary instead of just Nibley City corporate boundary. I I don't know. I, well.
Over here.
Right, that this says new.
This part.
Oh, I see. That's wrong, yeah. That's wrong. Yeah, that's probably. That that's a good note. I think it's, I think it's an error on the on the plat, there any. Changed.
Is there opposition about, so the motion is to approve the boundary line adjustment and wave second reading? Since this is a resolution, we will call the roll, please. It's an ordinance, we'll call the roll, please. What are you doing, Tom? Councilmember Van Syl, what is your vote? Councilmember Lowers, then what is your vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson, what is your vote?
In favor.
For in favor, not opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thanks for your patience. Welcome to Nibley.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to. And well, this is discussion and consideration ordinance twenty five twelve. This is the rezone parcel. At fifteen hundred west and twenty six hundred south from R two to. This is the lower triangle.
So this being second reading. I I think I'll start with staff's recommendation, just just to remind you of what our, what staff and planning commission's recommendation was. I unless unless you'd like me to, I I won't necessarily go through all of. The background information that that was given in the first reading, but just wanna, just wanna reiterate. What what the recommendation is and and that is that for for this proposal, both planning commission and staff. Recommends approval of this rezone in that. That and the re, the findings are that it's in support. Of the general plan, the future land use map, the financial economic development goal. To to maintain sustainable economic base, tax revenues and increase local employment, convenience of shopping. I can, I can provide more detail than that if you want a kind of reminder on this, but just wanted to reiterate what our recommendation was and why.
Al, would you like to address the council on this, please?
What do you want me to go to?
If you don't think you need to sell it, I don't.
Oh, I agree with you. You have to have the. Part of the issue we've had here.
The the commercial broker has asked what?
Just asking the landlord circle.
Who asked for that?
Deal with a lot of issues. Let me put this out as. When you had multiple people you're dealing with, it's a challenge. So if if I have to go to. Five parties on the same plane, you know, everyone's dealing with different issues and that's what it is. And so you have one issue, you know, we'll come up with one party or everything with a challenge and everyone has to be back and forth. Back in the first week of January. All this is that they look, you know, the gosh is ready to go, let's get going. Have a little bit of time to put this thing together. So we were. We were trying to get this. And for January, we. Cause you know, you have to deal with negotiations. So if Garrett wants something, ask. You know, it's just a boom right between all the parties and trying to keep everything there, but it was. All positive. And we're getting out to the last, you know, three or four, and there was about three or four things that we're trying to do. And the pressure was on trying to get to negotiate to get things as efficient. And my attorney father says this isn't good. He said, really, no time to resolve this. About this is we're going to waste all our time on. This commercial development, we're trying to come to this. It's like law and law and legal action gets air. That's really what happened. And it kind of blew everything to pieces.
You got a condemnation notice from Nibley City?
For the roundabout?
What do you mean condemnation? Does anyone know what Al's talking about? I mean, this council would authorize legal action. I think what we said is. Here's our offer. If you accept, if you do not accept this offer, we're going to pursue.
Same same break, then we're about to leave. It totally shocked us.
Talking about this domain parcel?
Yes, so. We tried to put this agreement together and we still felt that's when we eventually went through and said, no, the application will change this over to commercial. Well, what's happened is the gosers combined says, well, you missed the timeline. It's going to push out two years. So Stuart and Stuart said, you know, it's the man, talk to him. We'll tell you exactly what's happened there and the challenges we face. And so I think it'd be good work to call in there, but the challenging here is when you put too many issues on our plate and trying to resolve it and trying to come to it. It's taking a lot of time and effort and energy trying to, you know, top these things. Firstly, he he has come back to us and he said, look, you missed the timeline. We can't do this right now. Stuart is very good in trying to trying to get things in there. But we missed the window and it's hurt. And it's hurt all of us. And I think, you know, the thing that they're saying is they're trying to still put this. Together and that's why they said, you know, might give us a little bit more time and just table this and see if we can get this thing. That's all they're saying.
I believe this council's motivation all along has been to separate variables. I don't think what happens on the eastern side of the proper has anything to do, property has anything to do with the western side. That was. I I am saying that and 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 we have heard from you all kinds of bundles, all kinds of, well. On the roadmaster plan, if you do this, we'll do this and we'll do that and you do that and. Frankly, that's not the way this council has to operate. This can't for consider the proposals that are in front of it one at a time.
Information that they didn't want to reveal. And the council will be great. I mean, I have a lot of accounts.
You know, I'm a member of the council, right? Okay, thank you.
I do.
Thank you for that compliment.
I do. I honestly. So Stuart's asked, as he says, they're still trying to. Pull this thing back and he said, he couldn't be here tonight, but he said, you know what?
Who who's calling whom? I'm supposed to call Stuart, you're a real estate broker to do what?
So broker.
Uh, only in this meeting and when you're involved. I don't know what I'm supposed to do with Stuart thing. Don't have questions. So what's the map? For that parcel. This this other triangle, you don't know if you want this commercial.
And so we'll be, you know, in the next couple of months. The the concern in my name is this window may have got pushed out two years.
Are we suspending this indefinitely or just in this meeting?
No, I think until the next meeting, because the decision will be another two, three weeks. Maybe that's the part of the case. There's been some things happen. Since the last meeting, but. We need to put these things together and we just have a lot of complexity with. She was easy. It's already zoned. It don't have to do a rezone because it's already zoned commercial. I'm just trying to see, just to figure it out. If we approved it tonight, does that really hurt you? Well, it is sending me. So if it gets, if things don't happen for a while, then it's challenges in there and it does. I apologize. But Stuart just asked, he said, could we suspend it? And see if they can get to anything with the grocery. Which it wasn't the case, but that's what's happening.
So the council has the authority to zone this tonight, to rezone this tonight. It's up to you, you know, what you want to do. But we have a right to zone our city. There's been an application made. We've operated in good faith on that application. The council has has the authority to, since I understand.
Give you a motion to delay it to next meeting.
There's a motion to continue until our next meeting. Second, American discussion.
Not sure that it changes anything for the city to delay with your pieces of.
Know we want commercial in the city. There's a lot of moving pieces of what you can and take. I think he's he's working on it. It's gonna go instantly. I think next time we just don't have to do it.
So you, Al, showed us a statement from. Bill Gasko, the potential commercial developer that said. This is a piece of property that should be zoned, zoned commercial. Why would we not take his advice? Okay, so Bill.
Place, you know, come back through, absolutely. We, since the last council, we just assured you that. We spent six hours on. Coming back into our time, just walking through. They had met with the brochure and different entities within, so everyone's trying to put the same again. It's not what's trying to delay it. Although it was means to ask the council. To spend it, to give them a little more time to work with.
Bill has not asked for that.
Yes, he has. For me. He did, he called me, he did. So you you don't believe me, I know that. He he told me you don't believe me and that's fine.
So I spoke with Bill yesterday. And he told you that. He's talking to me. He told me that anyway. And and when you quote Bill, I have a right to follow up with Bill. And what he meant and what he said. I have an email from. Your representative that says, yeah, please talk to the commercial developer. So. I have conversations with you. I have seen a concept plan. For this piece of property. I don't know why you wouldn't rezonate.
Sell in the next few months, you've got to pay back taxes. That's what he's asking. You just say, it's gonna go through just matter of when. Can't make this deal of the cost of lumber and I gotta pay.
So Al made an application for a rezonate. We didn't do that. We didn't do that. Back taxes is not our problem. How much in back taxes do you have to pay if this rezones? The land use doesn't change, just zoning, we just talked about whether. Taxes is based on, taxes are based on land use, you told us it's based on use.
It's about eighty ten thousand dollars. So thing of this is, I don't think we're liable, yes, who pays it? We're liable, now we can't, in the agreement, mayor, it says that they will pay for the back.
There is no agreement, Al.
Mayor.
There is no agreement. Bill told me the grocer has moved on. There is no pending contract, there is nothing for you to dangle in front of our noses. Bill would love to see it happen. Who are you gonna call? You do not have a contract with Bill Gaskill. You do not have a contract pending. You do not have anything pending. Bill told me the grocer has moved to a different location. We had a willing city. We had a willing developer. And as you said. The grocer got tired of waiting and tired of dealing with all the changes and he moved to a different location. No changes?
Well, I think the city has the authority to rezone it, I think you should do.
Or not, wait, what? Motion, so.
Yes, this stuffs, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, definitely, this.
We're talking about back in the sources parcel, rezoning. It's not zone agreed.
Need to. Rezone. From now to next meeting doesn't change, it was the same power of what it is. But in three weeks. We put the same decision.
I urge the council to separate this issue from the next rezone. And I'm afraid that this is an effort to tie these two rezones together. Great vote, okay. Uh, the motion is to continue this in our next meeting. Those in favor of the motion to continue, please say aye. Okay, we'll come back to it. Thanks, Al. And next we have. Another rezone application, this is for. The east. Triangle, you, you might as well stay up there, Al. Levi, do you have anything else to tell us?
Well, maybe just orient you with, with the area we're talking about here. So this, the current RM zoned area there is in, in brown, the proposed. Um, is, is in kind of the reddish tint, just as a backdrop showing what's proposed with the. The current preliminary plat application, uh, which, which is presumed to be, you know, approximately would, would be built there, although this is not. This doesn't constitute any approval of that, uh, specific proposal. Uh, just as a additional background, this is a proposed, um. The previ- previously approved. Uh, concept plan for the commercial development, which was a- also included in this area and. And this property was recently rezoned to commercial from R two. Uh. You know, the staff. Just as a reminder, looked at various, uh, goals within the. Within the general plan, looking at this area, it is commercial and medium to high density residential. But given the limited, uh. Possibilities for, for commercial and the benefits, the potential benefits that come with commercial. It is both, uh, staff's and planning commission's recommendation to deny. Uh, the, this app, this application. The first one, again, is, is adding that to the map and then skipping forward to the next item on, on the agenda would be. Um. You know, enabling that, that rezone, so both, both. The planning commission and staff has recommended denial with the findings that, uh. First, the, the existing zoning is compatible with commercial and medium to high density residential. The rezone may limit the potential to attain commercial and economic development goal two, to create and maintain sustainable economic base for Nibley City. It'll provide tax revenues and increase local employment and convenience of shopping. And the recently approved concept plan for commercial development on the property in its site context demonstrate. Potential opportunity for commercial development that would be less likely if rezoned to mixed residential.
Go ahead, Al.
Okay, so. On rest of. Um, Trent's on the line here too, as we agree. In our conversation last week, we talked a lot about this one too. Um. And Stuart and Bill both, you know, Bill made the comment, he said, go get Bill's comment on this property. He, he said. I would think that the proposed, proposed rezone allowing for the townhomes to be built east of Heritage Drive and commercial south of twenty six hundred south would be desired regardless. That's from his statement, you asked for a statement and I got it from. And the issue in there is they can't put any commercial there and so. This was actually a longer conversation in here, when you deal with commercial property. You have a lot of different entities that are coming in, looking at different things and, and what Stuart said, we can't get anyone to come in. In my conversations out there with them. To do any commercial on that property, because I can't get a, a gas station, I can't get anyone to come in there because it's too far off the road. And it lacks visibility. So that's why he said, I would think that the proposed rezone allowing for townhomes to be built east of Heritage Drive would be desired regardless. So. I mean, that's. That's the thing, and then Stuart saying things in there. Um. After reviewing the existing site plans for the north side of twenty six hundred south, I believe that you need to zone the triangle piece east of Heritage Drive to residential. The layout efficiencies on that parcel are tough and you only get one solid pad, one solid pad. And others would end up going to non-retail type uses. The existing retail that we have been working on, seven acres on the south side of twenty six hundred south, where we need to put the retail pads. So that's from them, that's not from me. So that's where it goes, so. Said, let's put this back to retail and.
To retail?
But, I mean, we got a flat map in there and wait for, for this, just so we can move forward with the church. We got one other thing on the line, slight note on the church, I just emailed John. That we've got to get a correction on. Because anyway, that's, yeah, it's just, it's residential, just so we can start on the residential piece.
So I don't think. Bill answered the question I was interested in, because I asked Bill that question. Bill said he answered the question as to which was preferred. The east triangle or the south triangle? And I asked Bill specifically, and we've seen a concept plan from Bill. Then include the east triangle, I said, is the east triangle? Of no commercial value? And he said, oh, it certainly is. But if he had his druthers and he said here, the property south of twenty six hundred south. Is better as commercial, as if the only two possibl- there's only. Like one possibility here, pick this commercial or pick that commercial. But in fact, these two questions are not connected to one another. And Bill said. The property to the south is better. And he told me yesterday, but the property to the east has potential.
The problem with this is, so. You go out there, go out and tell Bill he's gonna purchase that property too. He's not gonna purchase that property.
He had a contract with you, working on purchasing that property.
A year ago. Where is the new contract going to the south?
That's fine, and that's my point. Bill expressed. A preference for the south. He did not say that the east had no commercial potential and no commercial value. He said, if I was the city council member faced with this question. I would say. If we have. Way more commercial property zoned than we'll ever need. And it was a question of zoning this piece of property that's currently R two to commercial. Or this piece of property. That's already commercial back to some residential. And those are my only two choices, zone this one commercial or zone this one commercial, then I would pick the south property. But if I wanted to look at the long-term commercial economic potential development of the city, there's nothing wrong. With the east property being zoned commercial, it has potential and once there's a. An anchor store and there's other things that could go in, we've seen the, we've seen the plot map. Bill, Bill didn't say, don't. There's no potential commercial on the east.
So I'm supposed to wait five years for that, for something to come around?
I've been waiting thirty-five. I've been waiting thirty-five.
Okay, that is a little far down to continue making all this property tax payments.
Nathan, I just, I don't think we need to discuss, I mean.
Well, you can make a motion and then we can discuss, let him ask his question.
Good question about, split somebody on the parcel. The last one, I don't know if you're gonna talk to Joel or not. Can we legally enforce two different zones?
I mean, we can, we do. Uh, when it comes to. Which one weighs out? Well, it. It. It regulates the, the use and the development. So if the development straddled it, I guess then, then you have to come into. To issues like if you had a building, for example, where, where do you, where do you draw the lines? I, I don't know the answer to that question, but we have other examples in town where. It splits the parcel. Now, it wasn't split on the parcel. For this one, but there was a lot line adjustment and we can't, we can't. Um, not allow a lot line adjustment. Based on zoning. But, uh. If this property isn't going to develop until it subdivides, and at the time of subdivision. That should be sorted out because they should, if, if, if the council decides to deny this application. They would need to draw the property line along the border of that, of that zoning for any residential property. Does that make sense? So you're not going to. I mean, unless you're gonna build one house that's in between the two properties which. Or, or one commercial building, then you would have to, I think, answer the question you're talking about, but and that's not in reality how this is going to. Happen, it's gonna be through a subdivision. And that would be drawn along, along those lines if they want residential. A residential development, it would have to be on that side of the, the zone. Does that make sense? We, we can explore that question more specifically with the. With the attorney, if you'd like to, but, um. I don't see it as a big issue in this case because. Any of this development is gonna be preceded by a subdivision which can follow those, those lines.
Will that subdivision still happen because they're gonna have a second sense of the area.
I mean, they can still build an access road. Or they could build twenty-five hundred south. That's another option. Twenty-five hundred south to twelve hundred west, that is. So there's options for them to develop that property with, with two access points.
So in the description, it has the two separate parcels, the parcel of. Zero, 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 one, zero, 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 two, because now the parcel viewer shows that zero, zero, one is not even.
Yeah, they've, they've, they've done a lot line adjustment since this. This time. Uh, that's been reviewed by staff, that's been approved. But what's, what's been noticed is what was in place at the time they submitted their application and, and at the time. Uh, it was originally considered by planning commission. So that. Those descriptions are based on what was in place at that time. But the area is the same. The, the actual acreage and property we're talking about is the same, just the lot lines have been moved.
So what happened was grocer wanted to move the store around runway. And then they came back and changed it, and so we went in and rezoned it for you to move everything into position there. They, they grocery came back, so they want to flip the, the direction of the store, and so flipped. Everything around on the commercial development so that this east piece. Wasn't really no longer in so much of play anymore. So we wanted more visibility on twenty-six hundred south and then on highway nine, because they felt like people would come off twenty-six hundred south and go to the grocery store. So this whole issue has come back to what the grocer wanted and we followed directions and. Fortunately, kind of plenty of the waters in here, so. On this east side, Trent's on the line here, he's on Zoom, he can, he's been involved with those discussions there too. Um. He knows that. The development on the east side, I mean, like commercial. You know, if Stuart says he can't get any people, it doesn't matter, so they say it would matter if you can't get any people to go to the east. We're just sitting there. It's all in, you can't do any residential, we're stuck. What do you do? What do you have to do, just turn it back into gray belt and start over? You know, all we're trying to do is push this thing forward and, and get going on it. That's all we're trying to do. And like I said, you've got the best, the state's best commercial brokers, Stuart Lane here, you should stop.
So we were making great progress, I thought. On a RM application. That did not include this triangle piece. And what changed was. I don't agree with that, I think we were making great progress. But what changed? And, and if I can finish, what changed was, there was a sale of property on the east side of, of your boundary on twelfth west. So all at once, you didn't have as much room for residential development. And then the residential development spread out to this east triangle. So it seems to me that's what changed.
So tonight, the church, they.
No, you sold the property to them, or I assume you did, they filed an application. They filed an application, but it seems to me that this. Lack of space for the residential came at the same time that you sold property to somebody else.
The church has been in place.
We were working as a committee before that.
But then you abandoned it and you kind of said.
No, you abandoned it, Al. You abandoned it when we got into the ownership of the road. And insisted that TIF was guaranteed. Motion to deny the rezone application, is there a second? Is that a second? Thank you, Eric.
You'll see why we go against staff and planning zoning and against everything that's been planned for this. It's changing.
So, sorry, you said the reasonable application. This isn't this reasonable application. This is just adding that part of the two to the RM, correct?
Yeah. But they're, that's the next thing. I mean, they're, they're intricately related. So the motion is to not, did I say rezone? It's to deny the adding.
Yeah.
My.
I'm still sitting there.
I don't like the opinion of the attorney to just make me feel warm and fuzzy. I'm not split zoning thing because it may, there may not be issues for the city, but you know, from my work side, it creates problems. So, if I deal with this, for my side of the title search here, I just wanna know what, I like the attorney's opinion before I vote on this.
But you realize there's a subdivision that comes before any development. I mean, a real subdivision. Through the city council type subdivision, not a title company subdivision. Right?
Yeah, I also, I also might remind you that if there is a problem, it was created by the applicant. Because they, they adjusted the lot line. That lot line wasn't there until um,
How's bill twenty-three supposed to fix?
Right, but we can, we can ask, I, I guess I just need to clarify what, what the, what the question is for, for the attorney.
I want to ask Joel. Split zoning, parcel. What, what, what's the precedence and what, how I can go?
We can make that up.
Yeah.
I'm making substitute motion to for thirty. Is, I think, but I mean, it's all one parcel here where you're gonna draw the line and put it back and do it. If you change the lot line. I don't.
So you're most You do, I, I guess I just don't see the problem because you do that through sub, you do, oh, sorry, go ahead. Sorry. I just don't see the problem because they do it through subdivision. They can divide that property off through, through a subdivision for residential development. Wherever you draw that line, as long as it's clear where that line is, and it is because it's drawn exactly along the previous property line. When they, if and when they subdivide that property, they'll draw it along that line, that subdivision. I, 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 I'm just not seeing.
Well, regardless, we can, we can get you in contact.
Right.
Okay, the motion we're discussing now is a motion to give.
I want to make sure I have all my decks low because this one could go in court.
Okay, um, the, and, and my thing, my recommendations to the council is to decouple these two rezones. And I see a the, to delay the first one and ask for this one, you know, it's, it's like a carrot. And these two are not, these two are not coupled, what? As far as the city is concerned.
Yeah, for me, it's just a fact that it isn't being fired. Make a mistake.
Can I ask this? Do you want the areas within Nibley City that can be zoned RM to include this portion of a parcel? So that's the question for answering. And I doubt, we're, we're rezoned, we have this the map. And like mayor and said, things have changed because there's been selling land. But when we, when we changed the map initially, we already made this discussion. So this is where we wanted it. As a city. And so getting the attorney and some of that, it's just, you've already made this decision. The proponent is the one that's coming after this. All staff and planning zoning have reckoned the denial. So why are we entertaining?
Yeah, if this could be either goes to court, I want to know. If they're already getting.
What, when you deny it, it will not have a chance to. There will be no So if you avoid, I understand you want to know because it's useful information, but I just, I don't even see it as an option to entertain. So just deny it. Because we already it was a good effort. He thought about changing it, but we as a city, we're already drawing the line. And both staff and planning zoning. It's not even a court, we deny it. So we have to worry about.
What question would the court be answering, Garrett?
For me, it would be if we have two different zoning on a, a single parcel, which one weighed out, you know, we obligated that, you know, three quarters of this is zoned RM, but only portion of it's commercial. So if this goes to court, does the court say, you know, would the court go, we have two zonings on a single parcel, majority wins?
And, and so a plaintiff would be asking for what?
Well, maybe one of the best way to phrase this, asking for putting in a parcel because the parcel has two different zonings, which one gets enforced?
The one that matches the development application and the subdivision.
And this as long as everybody ends. See this stuff on the tone.
Maybe we should avoid it. Oh, yeah. And deny and avoid it.
Wait, because use the two, so I haven't played some single person yet.
My question is, is what do you want us to do with probably that? If you deny it? If you still have to put it off the table, start over again?
Hey, Craig, I want you to develop what the zone you have in the space that you have.
What if it doesn't work? That's, that's fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars down the drain.
It's the best assistance it's all and to help you with landing.
Well, I'm, that's my question is, is, I would, I mean, you guys have been great. Hey, we can talk about past things that we haven't got support, you took the staff or any, we never got. What we want is to say, okay, let's sit down, do this and see what we can do to make this work forever. And so I'm just, that's why I've gone to you and said, okay, let's sit down, walk through some ideas to make this thing work, to help it out. If it, if, if we have, we can spend a lot of money on this and we just can't continue forking out money and say, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. I can't go back to my family and say, let's spend another seventy-five hundred thousand dollars, a thousand dollars redesigning this on something that there's no certainty that we can do.
But we have supported your family in a way, maybe not the way we want it, but you have the most invaluable property in Nibley City right now. If your family wanted to sell it, they could.
So you have to sell it?
We'll see if we can do it. I'm saying you have a very entitled property. And that if you are at a point where you don't know what to do financially or can't get things to work, that is an option also that we cannot control.
Correct. And, and basically it's getting us into a position where we have to go back, everything and say, we can't continue forking out all this money. I mean, just the delay the last three years, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Us. Okay, our families bear, no, our, our own, but we've, we've taken on that. Now, you don't see that, but we try to make things work. If it came to this, I'll guarantee, and this isn't a threat, when my family would just say, we're done, we'll walk out because it's, it's not working. And they would say, you know, we want the commercial there, but if we can't get things to work with the city, we're going to just say, you know, I, I, I can ask the board to, can we spend more money on some of the side of work?
So this has nothing to do, talking about RM rezone. Don't, don't tie those two together, Al. So let me ask you this question. Are you saying that you spent seventy thousand dollars on engineering design for a pro, a project that was not entitled by zoning? You said you spent seventy thousand dollars on engineering and now you're just gonna throw that away if you don't get this rezoned. So in other words, you spent seventy thousand dollars designing a development that you were not entitled to by zoning?
Yes. We put those checks and hope that they do. Now, we have finished everything because that parcel's still sitting in this. So all we're trying to do is make it work. If it, if it, if the council says, hey, look, we, you know, we, you know, we're gonna let you do it. I'm seriously, we do. I mean, if someone has an idea and says, hey, look, let's do it this way, I'm looking to it, but we can't continue just forking out money and just chasing wild dreams. We're trying to put something on the table that's solid. And you have, I think, the people in this thing, a commercial developer and Stuart, he says, hey, but we need this.
This has nothing to do with commercial. We're talking about residential rezon.
But he's, you, your staff just said this needs to be commercial. But it, there were these negotiations with commercial that they're trying to be some time.
You said it needed to be commercial. You asked for a commercial rezon.
For the aim to this.
And you talked about changes? No, things haven't changed. Just changes haven't been made, made the commercial developer afraid of anything?
They, they switch them all the way. And so we would take all the in back cash and make everything trying to get those in the main position. Then we're going to switch it. And so, and if we can get this thing to go through. But the fact is, they, you, you have to fail because Stewart, Stewart's the one that has to sell. So anyway.
So the, the motion, the substitute motion is to delay the, the continuum to RM. I see that we are. Those in favor of continuance, please say aye. Those opposed? It's a tie, I'm opposed.
Motion on the table is now to deny.
All right, what, so can we clarify?
So the motion before the council is to, the substitute ballot, so we go back to the original motion, which is to deny the modification of the RM map. Are you ready to vote? Those in favor? Those opposed? A, so it's a tie, two to two. Uh, I vote to deny the modification of the RM map.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll go back to it. To love right now. It's, this is impossible to work with and
Why does that not surprise me? Well, thank you, Al. Done with that. We're gonna go on to the next one, you can say it then.
This is your email. Okay. Okay, survey.
When did you send this email? When did you send this email? Oh, thank you. Sorry, I haven't seen it.
Anyway, you have these, be correct.
Staff, can you look into that?
Next item on the agenda is a request for rezon of this east triangle from RM to, uh, from commercial to RM.
Yep.
Motion to deny to a second. Standing for Mary, discussion. Those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Meaning opposed. Uh, so the motion to deny, it's, yeah, for the, yeah. We go to the fifteen, fifteen, fifteen. Annexations, oh, right. Uh, let's have Levi give a introduction if you guys are okay to press through.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, uh, you may have heard that we, we did have a discussion with one of the, one of the proponents of this, um, of this annexation that they wanted to postpone it. However, uh, there, uh, today, um, staff had a dis- discussion with the oth- the other proponent. Um, who's under contract for, for one of the properties in this uh, in this annexation proposal. And I'll, I'll let, I'll let them speak to it directly, but they've, they've asked that there's been some new information, they've asked to continue this rather than rather than just, uh, you know, denying it or, or I guess withdrawing the application. So I don't, Blaine.
Yeah, Blaine with Heritage Land Development. Um, yes, we've been kind of back and forth, there's a little bit. What we're looking at doing is continuing with the annexation, just a change of ownership on some of the parcels. And we would continue with the discussions we've had on the road improvements. Um, those wouldn't change at all. But we would, like the mixed residential, we would have that just zoned as the R two A that was uh, proposed before. So it's recent changes and so we feel like we a vote tonight and just asking to have it postponed to the next meeting.
Okay. Um, all right, so there's a motion from Norm to continue this at our next meeting, second from Garrett. Uh, are there things the city needs to do, staff specifically, for us to get ready for that discussion? I mean, there's the thing about the road, right? The, the short road, the short part of
Yeah, absolutely.
Just, and, and I assume you guys are working on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Blaine's been part of those discussions as well. Yeah.
I want to get those numbers ready on our side versus
Okay.
the other side, so we can.
I just have a little question. Um, if they change the zoning, do we have to do basically a legal hearing and things like that or?
Well, the, the proposal on the table is what they are proposing, which, which is in line with planning commission and with what was passed at first reading with the R two A zoning. They're, they've just, they've just expressed that they're in support of that, of the R two A as, as planning commission is recommended and ha- as you passed in the first reading. So no, I don't think so.
Well, so the zoning zero, three, zero, four, and ten, eleven were R two A. But I thought I've heard that they were considering putting thirteen outside R two A.
Correct, which is, which is what, which is what planning commission recommended and what council approved for first reading. So they're just saying they're not pursuing at this time the RM, so.
Thank you.
So, sound right to you, Blaine?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to continue to the next meeting. Uh, any problem with voting, saying no opposition, let's, uh, those in favor of continuance, please say aye. Any opposed? None? Okay.
I'm not sure you wanted to learn everything.
This next one should be short, should be short and easy.
All right. Levi, let's do, I have sixteen, discussion consideration of an extension for Firefly Estates.
Yeah, so this, uh, the applicant is also here for that one. Heritage Land Development, uh, but they, that within the, for whatever reason, within the Firefly Estates uh, development agreement, there is a five-year expiration for, for their approved preliminary plat that. And I didn't see anything statutorily that that was required, but it is in the agreement, so the preliminary plat, as of, as of now, expires on May twenty seven, twenty twenty five, so toward the end of this month. And they're not quite ready to submit their final plat for phase three. Um, they're, they said they're pretty close, uh, but they, they'd like one, one more year. So that's what this would do, is give them another, another year to submit their final plat. Otherwise, they would have to resubmit for a preliminary plat.
Room, second on the one-year extension, motion from Norm, second from Garrett.
On this, and I brought it with him, when we approved. That they would do a nibly sign coming into where we're gonna finish the road and stuff.
I, yeah, I looked at the development, I had some time earlier in the meeting, so. We're specified for the size of the we would be providing this.
The phase three, that's the next phase, but yeah.
Uh, question for staff. Does a delay recommend additional costs to staff in terms of pass switching, having to pick up stuff? I mean, is there a cost to, a cost to you in time or money for this delay?
No, I mean, I mean, it would actually be the opposite. If you didn't delay it, we, we would have more.
That's enough. We'll have to pay him. Okay, no, no cost to the city. Okay, other thoughts? Is there?
Go ahead, go ahead. I, 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 I questioned on one group name, because there was a, a letter, and it was the older reading. But I didn't see what at least accepting the letter as a legal document? Are they amending?
It's, it's ju- i- it, it's just an extension. We asked, we asked Joel about this, and he said this only had to go to city council. So.
So just basically, it's kind of staffed.
It's a, it's an extension of that, of that term. Dom, do you need it?
Yeah, I think our group has some provisions on certain conditions, and we could request a written extension. Typically, it'd just be done at staff level, but because this was a development agreement, it was approved by city council. He decided to shift from the city council to the near extension.
Ready to vote? Yes, those, uh, those in favor can say aye. Uh, this is the one-year extension for Fire. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? You have, you have another year to come to nibbling meetings. Tom, do we want to talk about, uh, ULTs? SPDIs, or whatever language you want to use to describe those little flowers?
Can you maybe pull anything up, Tom? Doesn't exist. Let's see. Is it seventeen seven? Unless it's out of order here. I'm not seeing it. It only goes to seven, seventeen point seven. Which one?
Okay, thanks, Blaine.
Any of those ring a bell, or? Sixteen eight, okay, there we go.
Mislabelled. We probably.
It's all good. No, it, it, yeah, we had to, we changed the agenda.
Uh, so briefly, you had a chance. I put in an information packet, and appreciate you going out there and meeting with, uh, federal Fish and Game. Uh, we have a, and, and Tom's there, thanks. Along with, uh, Civil Solutions, we walked the property, talked to Fish and Game about what it would take to, uh, move along with, uh, this development of this park, because if we're not careful, uh, we're gonna run into grant funding problems with land water conservancy and also Utah outdoor recreation on the bike, on track. And so it kind of came down to, well, we need to figure out about the end of May, what's gonna happen uh, to protect these, or, yeah, to, to, I'll say, to protect these UL, uh, SPDIs, or, um, so that we can start construction this fall. In order to keep up. So I, I put some things in the packet about, you know, what would, uh, some other items of information, but mostly, the objective here is to say, what would the council agree to with federal Fish and Game? What would we not agree to? What might we negotiate? Does that sound?
That sounds great. So when you're looking at this exhibit here, the blue area is, is wetland, green area is, is additional wetland. That was the original nomination, the blue expanded that. And then the orange areas are, are known ULT, U L H Tresses, uh, populations. There were forty that were surveyed this last summer. Previous to that, someone else did a survey, I don't know who or when, but there was about sixty-five populations that were recorded at one point. So we learned this through this process. Typically, when someone would make an application for an area that's known to be U L H Tresses suspected be, they, they would have a three-year survey period, where you monitor for three years before they even make a determination. When I say they, I mean, the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. We've been, we've had several meetings, both with the city and the consultants. You met Coleman Klein from Civil Solutions Group, he gave a great presentation, and several conversations on trying to try to find a way to move forward with the project and provide a biological assessment that would pro- provide the protections to both the known U L H Tresses and the possible habitat. However, the, the Fish and Wildlife says, we need a three-hundred-foot buffer around, so. We're still working through that, that area, or that issue. And through this biological assessment, we're making grounds, and, and it's not quite committed, but they're entertaining the idea of working in the off-season of their belonging, and that would be between no dust-producing activities between July and September. Based on that, that means I need to have a permit in hand to start construction, say, September, if we're going to get this park done this year. Our, we have two, two grants, one's federal, one's a state grant, and the federal grant expires in fall of twenty twenty-six. So it gives us basically one construction season. So I don't mean to put pressure on anything, but you know, we're reaching this, this funnel, this, this, this crossroad, that if we don't get something done in this year, we're gonna have to hopefully get an extension, we're just gonna have to walk away with, walk away from about one point one million dollars for.
And seven fifty from?
And, and seven fifty from the, uh, the award.
Yes.
I, I mentioned we had a couple of, of meetings. There, there's, in the latest document, I think I gave a sample, it was actually a draft biological assessment. There's a lot of language in there. I went and reviewed it after I posted it, because I wanted to get it in front of the council, but I had Coleman soften some of the language. It was really strong, saying the city will provide a conservation easement. And this and that. I said, well, let's soften that, let's say, let's put instead of conservation easement, we're going to continue efforts to protect the populations, the known and future populations of these U L H Tresses. So that was softened, and we just sent that off Wednesday to wildlife. Basically, what it's, it's now funny. The Fish and Game. It's a Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game. It, it's in front of the people that need to review it. It's USFW.
Fish and Wildlife.
It's them, it's, it's them. We'll call them they or them.
It's no longer game.
Flowers, well?
So in, in this email chain, we also included the Army Corps of Engineers, because we didn't want to circumvent anything, so they're very aware of our, our efforts and our, and what needs to come, both. So based on this need to really accelerate this, this process, I would anticipate there's gonna be at least forty-five days of review period from the Army Corps of Engineers. And they could delay that. If, if we don't address everything all at once, they could delay that. And once they make a comment, there's really no time limit, so per, what I need to know is what we're willing to accept, what we're not willing, the, the yeses, definite maybes, and the definite no's, that we're not going to accept. So conservation easement, they even mentioned that the city could hold this easement, but they want it in perpetuity. And they don't want any disturbance, but I think there's room to maybe keep monitoring these populations and the mayor mentioned a possible boardwalk that would connect on the upper left-hand corner of the bike. The, uh, overbuck, I mean, season, two years, and very minimal disturbance. And kind of create a learning center that, that memorializes this U L H Tress. That, that's just one idea, but I'd like some input from the council on the do's, don'ts, yeses, the no's, and the maybes.
Example, like, what questions, though, like?
Like, like, I would like to, this easement or this conservation effort to say the city can install a park amenities, walkways, sidewalks, and things that definitely avoid the, the possible habitat. But also through continued monitoring, the possibility of adding additional amenities, such as a boardwalk that, that provides minimal minimal disturbance in these areas.
So the question is, do we just, we lose access to this land, or can we do things like a boardwalk? Which one does the council prefer on that?
But you, you're gonna submit this, showing that, hey, we, we changed the scope of our park, we're just gonna do anything with that area until we identify new, because she said she wanted another three years to do that, so, so that's what you're right up doing that. And then if there's room, then we'll add a boardwalk or something. But we don't need to put that down, we're just gonna save a lot of space for now, and then we evacuate. Yeah, so when this conservation easement or this protection that we're gonna provide, I'd like some language that allows future disturbance with minimal impact. Can, can you show me example of what you wrote? You change the name of something to say more of the monitored, like, anyways, I thought you were creative on. Yeah, that was, that's what I mentioned, I instead of having the language that the city will create a conservation easement, instead, I had to change that language, that the city will continue efforts to preserve and protect the, the species and the habitat, so.
So no rain.
No roundup. Well, so what, what else is also needed here? We, we need a bi- biological assessment, we need a biological observation. We'll need a, a maintenance plan. And then we'll have, we're gonna have to find some way to preserve and protect this species.
So let's start at the top. Are we re- are we willing to accept a conservation easement on this land? Like, exactly how big a land being, like, how much, all that green space? Oh, it could be the entire park.
I'm, I have a question about that, I mean, I thought it was baby, so I didn't read this one, but sure. But those are expensive to maintain.
You're asking exactly the right question. I asked the northern Utah whatever it is, land conservation, they won't touch it, because it's too small and it's too expensive.
Yeah, I would, I'm definitely shy away from saying yes, right. Heard that those are very expensive.
I agree with you. Now, let me ask you a different question then. Would you accept a conservation easement that is owned by the city of Nibley? We don't, we don't have some third party, which you should, if you want a conservation easement to work, you should have a third party
Yeah.
administering that conservation easement. But the Fish and Wildlife folks said, yeah, maybe the city could own the conservation easement.
So we would just have to have a staff member make sure that we're not doing anything we're not supposed to be doing on that. Like we, like we do with other easements, like we, like we're supposed to with other easements we hold.
She said she had to run that talk of her, yeah, 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 she didn't commit to that. And I told her, I said, you know, that's a slippery slope, because you can't have the fox watching hen house.
So one way, just as your speaking manner comes to mind, that maybe we, we hold the easement, but we put a provision in there that we do a, a report submitted to the Fish. I don't know if they'll buy off on it, but we can try. If, if we don't agree to something that it's acceptable to them, we, we won't get the part.
If, if we could find something that worked, where it's, you know, the city owned it, and just in order to be able to move this part along.
And, and here's, here's what I think the rub is there, even if we own the conservation easement. I think Fish and Wildlife will make us sign up for, um, maintaining the land use that allowed the ULTs to be there in the first place, which is cattle grazing. Or mowing, and it needs to be mowed when it's wet. And
He's supposed to. Why?
Because the grasses will outcompete the tresses. So you have to cut the grasses back while the tresses are are young and short. So that they can outgrow the grazed grass.
Just keep the cattle there, put a fence around it.
So this is great conversation. Maybe we could break it down into what we're willing to accept in the conservation easement, and what we're willing to accept in a maintenance agreement. We can do that simultaneously or separately, but I kind of wanted to disseminate the two.
Walk through there, then? With, with the handles?
Was it with the cattle, or?
Whatever, crazy. I'm not, but. They don't belong in a city park.
Same question, Firefly. Ski the cows. I asked a bunch of farmers if that was even.
I asked a bunch of farmers if that was even remotely possible.
To bring cows to Firefly Park.
What are they doing?
Sorry, it's back. So. We now got a grant. The grant required us to check for these. We checked. And we have another grant that. Both grants require us to start building when?
The the grant term expires, I think it's October twenty twenty six.
And these. Protected species. I've had a. Study done saying that they should be removed. They've had an open comment period that ended in March. Is there anything else that we can do? Or do we know the timeline in your discussions of of the city on that?
On the delisting of this species? I mentioned that. I I when we were talking conservation easement and I said, well, we couldn't put a provision in there that. If this city gets delisted, this conservation easement way. She says, well, the reason that these are being delisted is because of successful conservation efforts. The original things one. So phase one. Basically be this area. Right here. Parking lot, some walkways, there's playground, a couple of pavilions. There's some cornhole and gaga pit. And then we also can add this other parking lot. We've reduced. This larger parking lot, split it up. Because there's no more connection, there used to be a walkway here to connect to the bike park. Because we had to separate that to avoid the wetlands and the U U L T habitat, we decided to put another. Parking lot there with the restroom there. So we're almost getting three different parks. We had to reduce the number of pickup all courts from, I think it was a. Six to. Or eight to four or something.
It's still eight. Yeah, I think they're just.
We we had. Four and four, so we lost. Four. So in order to keep the grant money. What part of that park has to be built? Or what has to be done? To keep the grant money, this portion would have to be built. And this portion would have to be built because the money that we're getting from the grant here and applying to our match here. We're double dipping. Over here is our match there. So. It it the in the net amount of money we're getting. It's somewhere near two million dollars. Yes, because. This match is based on our match here.
We've already paid some money to the contract. People, correct?
We have. We paid twenty four, twenty five percent as a down payment. They're very accommodating to our schedule. They they really wanted to get it done this summer. Held them off till next. And then they're holding prices. Save things that are. Work to better. Is forcing us. Incentivizing us to. I was just trying to say, could we build the log fact first? Because it doesn't seem to have a U A D stresses problem, but. So like. When our match is. Based on what we're.
Could we build the? Bike track in the answers. Yes, but it costs seven hundred fifty thousand dollars more.
More?
More. I thought that was the match.
Yeah.
So we have. For for just for that.
And then we have still, this is a side note, we applied for another grant with the U org. For the perimeter track and jump line, which is another, what was that, one point? I think we applied for. Eight seven fifty or something.
Have they said no to that?
Haven't heard. So I don't know what's going on.
Same kind of doubled up on the request. Get some money, but no one's.
I guess what I'm thinking is I just have to build what we can and don't like. These tresses thing until they get listed.
But even if it's delisted, it's. That's. I thought I was saying like it still has to be preserved.
Not if we don't have a conservation easement.
I guess it's only if it's already.
And and what I think we're saying is you can't do that without gambling on grants. Like you're there's we, if we walk down that road, you're putting down all that millimeter.
Two million.
Tom, I hesitate to bring this up, but I I think I think there's a, there's also a. A contractual obligation with visionary homes, right?
That's another good point. We we have some milestones that we have to meet with our agreement on Richland Pond or Richland Park.
They built a lot of that development.
Based on the number of building permits issued and. Just wrapping up infrastructure, basically seven, eight, nine, which are their last few phases. Which we're gonna hit. First, we had to have a design and then we had to have. Certain amount of this park done. I think it was a million dollars spent towards the park here.
Those that's paid for by.
It's paid for by park impact fees, but we technically are obligated to spend those funds. And if we lose the grant. It just means rather than paying for half of the improvements. Or fifty percent with the park impact fees. We we just have to pay for all of it. We lose, we just lose the grant, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Defecting.
Right. I I'm sure that's. That that could be on, that could be on the table, but you but. Right.
Most of this park was designed for nature anyways. We knew they're wetlands. We can, we build these two and then we can't go there, but we can get a walkways. It's. Pretty close to. It is very close. That the connection from this portion of the park to there was eliminated and this boardwalk portion is dominated, but. For the most part, yeah, we can fit everything in to redesign, working directly with. The citizens group. We had to squeeze some things here. We had to fix some things. You still see a little bit of fill. There's some of these red areas or fill into the wetland and that habitat area, but. I think we could have found a way to completely avoid it, but then that puts us at risk with the Army Corps application. If if we don't have. If we're not applying for a fill permit. And we're just asking for a delineation confirmation, A J D is what it's called. They don't, there's that timeline that Travis was talking about earlier this evening that. They don't have a timeline. They don't have to respond. It could sit for years. However, if you have a fill permit or dredging permit, they have forty five days to respond. That is the strategy that we that we use there. So so some other ideas for conservation easement. I'll I'll go back to that.
It's really distracting.
No, no, great. Um, but it sounds like everyone's okay if the the city owns and controls it. And it has to have walks, it has to have park amenities that happen. And are you okay if we add? That will include an education kiosk that talks about that. Any other things that we need to have?
I think if it gets delisted, we should be forgiven the conservation easement.
Delisting?
I don't think they should be able to use our conservation easement to save the world.
Especially after the delistings are. And that's a mandate from council?
I'm suggesting as a strong negotiating point.
So.
And it's just gonna be relisted because all those U L T ladies tresses will come back.
It'd be a negotiation.
Yeah, if 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 they're uncomfortable with. Just.
Because she's already said. What's her name? Rita. Rita. She said, no, we we would want this in perpetuity. Although we've typically done these in perpetuity.
If you said, if it's delisted when you are best to maintain.
That's fine.
That way, that way we just won't work quite as hard.
We'll get rid of the conservation easement.
Yeah.
Will still work towards.
Get rid of the cows.
Obviously, no subdivision, no other things other than. You can give up your development rights.
I mean, I have asked. We're willing to move the conservation easement to Firefly.
We don't know if there's.
But there's fireflies. We'll protect the different species. I think the kinds of activities that would make me happy, given the cost of all this stuff and everything else is. In the potential habitat areas. We want sidewalks and boardwalks.
In within the.
Within the habitat area. Well, she.
How many boardwalks in the habitat area?
Okay, because it's wet. That's fine. I'll go for that. She she softened on boardwalks.
She said, well, how much disturbance is that? Well, could you worry for like education? We'll do our best to get education closer to the plant.
Boardwalks or that?
So another thing I'd recommend is maybe continue survey. Of the course, instead of just two more years, we agree to something like six, so we can get a better idea with. If we do decide to do a boardwalk that we can try to avoid.
I'm not certain what to do about surveying because. If. If it's inexpensive. And if we lose ground or the tresses lose ground, we're gonna get blamed for it.
She says they come back. She she said they fall and then they come back.
That's true. There's, and they don't understand that.
But keep them on.
Bottomless side sometimes.
So there's Willa Lake project. She told me about this, but. It there was, this population got down into the double digits, just a few. And then like two years. Separated from that, there was over fourteen hundred documented like two years later. So they're really cyclical. Okay, so you don't want to agree to continue survey? It's up to you guys. It's fine. As far as they survey, we just continue to identify them.
Actually, I was a little bothered. I suppose I have a chip on my shoulder about the survey because she said, well, normally we survey for three years. But we'll let you off that. We'll just assume that everything that might be habitat is habitat. That the three year survey would. Would verify.
So that's kind of where I was going. If we if we were able to say, hey. It hasn't expanded past those orange areas in six years. We would like to encroach. Further down. So that that's the benefit of possibly extending the survey. But if we want it, if we don't want it, that's fine too. But we we do need to do it for at least two years. The second, the first of those two years is this year. And then the next July, August.
It can't be that expensive to have somebody go out there and look at it, right? Survey it. How much was it? Five thousand?
So would we agree to two years, six years?
Of surveying?
Two? But this is negotiate. So the longer you do it, the more. I would say four. That's great. So who? Yeah, there's great. Yeah. So can we, let's see, who who's in, who's in favor of four? Just head out. Who's in favor of two? Who's more in favor of eight? We'll start with two.
Let's say that I'm gonna put based on surveys, future consideration for.
Yeah.
Let's say that. We will. Practice land uses. That are established by. Science that says this is how you in you protect habitat.
So are you, are we in the maintenance portion of things?
Yeah, I jumped to that. Maybe I did that. Yeah. Cause. Cause I think there's. A bunch of speculation about what works, doesn't work. Yeah.
And that's a good point.
I don't wanna chase.
We don't know what cheap will work. We didn't know if goes will work. It might.
This might work. Let's try that. This might work. Let's try that. Cause we could spend a bunch of money. Trying stuff. Thanks, Aaron.
So I have.
Uneffective, yeah, leave science out of it.
Practice land uses there. Anything else there that could be cattle grazing, could be mowing, could be burning it. So another.
Do you guys see how good Firefly Park looks where they burned it? It's gorgeous. Just beautiful.
So it sounds like we are okay by putting the cattle. I think that would go a long way in this maintenance thing. We'll keep it trimmed and proper.
And I think also this is a practice. Protecting, preventing. So maybe pets not issues.
Yeah. Yeah, so let's say limit public access and pets. Limited to more. Anything else we could. Any, any others like definite those? Maintenance practices, we need to go back to easement restrictions. I think I have a really good list. I think we can get something started with that. Thanks for doing. So moving forward, would would you want me to just like distribute it to council on before we? Submit it to Fish and Wildlife?
Just just go to the machine on our behalf.
So click send and do it.
If we're not happy, we'll let you know.
You can still build the park.
So we have a new, let's move to, this will be like really brief, eighteen. Uh, we have a new. Actually, it's an old Cache County Fire District. It was formed back in the mid nineteen sixties. And. It did get rolling, as it turns out. People say it never got rolling, but it did. And it's funded. One of two ways. It's funded at the county level with. Uh, upper, let's say, coordination type management. And it's also funded at local municipal level. By cities having their own fire departments or neighboring cities. Paying the fee to be protected by those fire departments. That's how Nibley and Hyrum work. Problem with. What was passed in the nineteen sixties is it said this fire district could include all of Cache County except. And the part, the county part that has been. Paid for out of the general fund of the county. um, is also paid with Logan City taxes that they pay to the county to the general fund. So this whole thing could be as simple, despite what I heard, how terrible it's gonna be. It could be as simple as figuring out how to pay for the county part of the costs for this fire district without having Logan's money in it. Which will amount to, I didn't put it in here because we haven't seen the actual analysis. It'll amount to about seventy dollars a year per household in the county minus Logan to make up for what Logan's paid. So that may be the problem to solve. And it just kind of seems like the county is just on pins and needles and refuses to admit that they might actually raise taxes or raise a fee or so. Now this whole new board is formed to help message that there's gonna be a fee increase. So I, I think it actually thanks to Justin's helping me see what was going on. We've had one meeting. It might actually be a nothing burger except it's a seventy dollar nothing burger per year. Not a half million dollar house.
That's pretty good. Yeah, well, I saw they approved that because they recorded it on every single property in the entire county.
The new fee, you know, the district, Iron District and the map and everything. So they're just mapping the fire district. It's all mapped and spending.
Yeah, okay. So does that, I mean, I'm.
There's no fee associated.
When it was created in sixty, was it the boundary of Logan City then? Cause the Logan is just like the school district boundary. Logan boundary has changed. So is it a portion of Logan or all of Logan?
I've asked to see the legislation and nobody will tell me.
That's a good point.
What I, what I sent you was what I sent, what I sent you was the summary of the county clerk saying, well, here's, here's what's going on. That's what I got when I asked for the enabling legislation.
Yeah.
That's just like the school district.
But I suspect it wasn't frozen because Logan continues to supply fire service to everyone inside Logan City.
That's fine, but if they were part of the district before. How did they get out of the district?
By this legislation that said, we're gonna create a fire district, but Logan's not in it.
Yeah, that, so that, that's a just a question that you answered. Is it Logan then or Logan now as Logan changes?
My guess is it's whatever city Logan, it changes. It's my guess. Cause Logan provides, they're so good at providing fire protection, they were excluded from this county fire district. And they provide fire protection to everyone in Logan. Then and now. That's, that's my guess.
Yeah.
Like, we'll see when we see the financial analysis. That's all I have on that. The Hyrum Fire Department was kind of spun up on it. They wanted to talk to me about it. And Justin was there too. Though they were so against it, they said this would get voted down in Hyrum. Hold it down. How do you do that? Oh goodness. Well, uh, we're up to the budget, Justin.
Twelve second pause for the recorder.
Gotcha. But then I was.
I got, I got one. If you could be right foot. I, I don't. They use leveraging. You just wanna make it busy. With the separate watch. Give me a way.
This is all.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, sir. This is very. This friend, Jim. Oh, we had on the U K.
Apparently not. Yeah, I forgot.
Okay, we're back in session and the one next item is workshop on the budget coming up. Five twenty six budget. Justin, take it away, please.
Hey, well, this will be the first of four times that you see the budget so we can make this pretty quick. I'll try to blow through it and answer any questions that you may have. If it advance. Okay, so just a reminder is how we've standard practices in our budgeting has always been to budget our revenues lower than what we really expect. And budget our expenses higher than we expect. And we've done a good job of this and typically we spend about seventy five to eighty five percent of what we actually received. Now that number is specifically from the general fund. So because we revenue high, but expenses low or sorry opposite, it's late. We're able to put away a little bit of money. Is what that amounts to. And well, I'm sorry, I really am struggling here for a second. We received about a hundred and five percent of what we budgeted in revenue last year, and we only spent about four point three million. So we always want to do the grants. We push hard to get grants. We have a whole list of grants here that we've been working on over the last four or five years. I don't want to go through all of these, but just to show that we we do put a large emphasis and do a good job of trying to bring money into the city from outside sources. And I looks like I failed to. Fill those numbers in. I'll have those numbers in for the next time. Property and sales tax is always a big part of the budget for the general fund. We're looking this year at a two to three percent increase on both of them. It's not a very big increase based on economic uncertainty with things are going on. Amy and I had a lot of discussions about what to do with the sales tax, but we really felt we'd leave it pretty low in increase. That was reaffirmed with just the last report we got for the month of. February, February, March, February or March sales tax. Sales tax is always two months behind. So one of those months we were we were down. Quite a bit twenty thirty thousand dollars from even the month before. So we are seeing a little bit of the economy cooling off, but. You know, with the anticipated growth, we're feeling comfortable with bringing in about one point five million in sales tax. Property tax in the past, we have always really under budgeted. How much we were going to receive, we tried really hard to do a fine tooth comb on that, try to get to a more accurate number last year, and I missed it by two percent. Unfortunately, it was two percent too low. I wish it would have been two percent the other way because we we're looks like for the first time in. At least my experience here at Nibley City, we're going to receive probably a little less or like. To the wire of what we actually budgeted for property tax. So. Long story short, we're not expecting. Big change in property tax or really revenue coming coming into the city from last year to this year. We have built this budget based on no truth in taxation process or no raising of taxes per the state. Definition. That said, that doesn't budget a lot of money to put into savings. Where we will have extra money to put into savings or into our capital projects will be if we get more sales tax than we anticipate. Or if we spend less than we have budgeted. Which has always been the case. Like I said, we try to always spend less than we budget. So there is usually quite a bit more than what we budget moving from the general fund. Into the capital projects, but this is the tightest. I've seen that number, that number right now in the budget is sitting about a hundred thousand dollars. Moving over to the capital projects was just considerably lower than where it has been in the past. But again, because of the revenue we've received, part of that was twenty nine hundred South discussion, part of that was. More. Interest that we've had in the past. So there's a few reasons why we have more revenue coming in. But. We're not budget and I've had this internal struggle about being more transparent and showing the citizens that we are intentionally saving money. And putting it towards capital projects and Tom and I had a good discussion today about. Our capital projects master plan and showing the residents more clearly that in we. Are budgeting for these expenses and putting this money away for a reason, and it's to replace the public works yard and building and to replace city hall. So they can see that money is actually pegged and moving towards a future project as opposed to just being. Money that's left over and getting rolled into a a list of projects. So I I've kind of had this internal struggle the last few months as I've been working on this, trying to figure out a good way to explain that and show that and be more transparent. Because it looks like we're rolling a whole bunch of money into capital projects. And we are, but it's just kind of. It's not really obvious that that's happening, in my opinion. So I'm I'm trying to work on that, figure out a good way to show that. Some of the big changes we're seeing in the budget are salaries. Most of this is from the compensation study that was done a few months ago. That reset a bunch of salaries. We had enough cushion in this current fiscal year to cover that. We're going to be down to the wire. On those funds, it'll be really close. Moving forward, we are proposing right now about three percent cost of living adjustment and a three percent possible merit for the employees. There's a good spreadsheet going around right now where other municipalities are inputting their. What they're gonna they're planning on doing it and most, most of them are pretty close. I would say we're a little on the high end. Which is where I would personally like to be. We're just by that. I mean, mothers are two five, two point five, two. On their cost of living and and the same for their merit. Some of them are just doing cost of living and no merit. There's a whole range of things, but right now this this budget is built on the three percent cost of living and the three percent possible merit. I haven't checked. I think. That did we look at the at the PCI number? Were you with me on that? Yes, yeah, like I'm pretty sure we're really close to that. Some of the other big funds that are. Increasing our expenses, excuse me, that are increasing are insurance. Insurance is tied to salaries because our salaries went a lot of others. A fair amount of things that are tied to salaries. So as our salaries go up, other things go up. IT services, security and IT is going nuts. We made a big jump last year. We're likely to see another big jump. We're negotiating and discussing with our IT consultant right now. About how to handle that, how to manage that. You guys are aware, all your computers just needed to be upgraded. Some of those things really haven't seen in the past. We have. Just in the foreshadowing of the future a little bit, when we got a bunch of COVID money, we paid to put a fiber. To this building and to the public works and then paid for five years of service. That five years is up next year. So we got one more year, then we're gonna start paying. For our fiber service and we're gonna have to look at some discussions there because I believe that's anywhere from five to seven hundred bucks a month to maintain that service is what I've been told. Now, we may be able to cut back on some of our other Comcast. Things like that, but so utilities specifically internet is continuing to go up. We had we'll have an election this. Bank charges are going up, number of credit card swipes is going up, which is super nice for ease of. How we pull money into the into the city, but also it comes at an expense. So we're having to pay those credit card fees. Those are all going up. We already talked about nine one one. We increased that fee that's being passed into the nine one one dispatch center. The sheriff's office is we're mayor and I have met with the sheriff's office. We'll be bringing a proposed contract amendment to you next meeting that proposes a small increase. Our garbage goes up every year with the index, the consumer price index. Library, you just approved a contract of it going up quite a bit. We got a couple of master plans that we're working on in the middle of. Those continue to be increasing costs. The other one is education, travel and training, and I throw that on there because we you're seeing to see some increase because we have some targeted. Licensing and training. We want to get some of our few employees, but we've actually cut back pretty drastically on as a whole on. People going traveling to destination, you know, further than Utah to be able to receive these education training, which. We've always tried to do a good job of supporting and trying to get our people out there to get learned, get or to go learn and be trained. But it's it's very expensive. So in kind of summing all that up, we're looking at about a four percent increase in the general fund, which isn't huge. We do have a few proposed capital projects. None of these should be any great surprise to you except for maybe twenty six hundred South. There's an issue between eight hundred West and hair, excuse me, Nibley Elementary, the sidewalk being too narrow. So as we've talked with the school about trying to make safety improvements because kids are riding their bikes out in the street or on the sidewalks, there's cars being parked there. We're. Proposing doing some improvements there with some new wider sidewalk, clean up the park strip, put in a decent swell and clean that up a little bit. There, I think that's really probably, you know, the other ones are pretty small. We need to repairs the floor in the public works. Shop, the street shop. The problem with the floor is it's not slopes enough and the salt from the trucks and the water is not getting to the drain. It's eating the concrete, chips and bunks, some stuff up. So we need to make some. Modifications and some improvements there. Anybody got any other questions about those real quick?
I'll just point out that twenty six hundred project was identified in the active transportation plan. So. You have kind of seen at least some form of it. We talked about it then.
Can we give them priority? Welcome. We talked. Six throughout the next month and a half. We we really appreciate that. Correct. Yeah, we were not talking any right away acquisition here. We would be moving the sidewalk from where the back of the walk is now towards the asphalt if we did. So if we approve this project, we'll 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 do a whole public notification campaign and go talk to these residents and kind of show them what we're thinking, make sure they're okay with it and understand. Potentially. Yeah, I mean, we're always looking for that option, and I know that stuff's coming up again, right?
You mean like, like you say, routes to school. We can look, we can see what is available.
Now, we, like you said, we built this budget pretty conservatively, trying to keep our expenses down, not increasing drastically, but we do have some. You know, you know, needs, wishes, if you will, things that we're looking forward to. Someday being able to incorporate into the budget. One of those additional employee for the streets department. And Stormwater, they actually asked for that last year, but we just not quite got the room in the Stormwater Fund and or the General Fund to be able to squeeze out another employee. So. We've talked about some maybe some mitigation strategies there and what we could do. We feel like we could survive probably at least for another year. Recreation Department could use some more help. As always, they do a phenomenal job. There's so much there to do. We just have to decide really if that's where we want to invest our money. So but it's not currently, sorry, none of these things are built into the budget right now. We talked earlier about the GIS and appreciation of GIS, how amazing that is. Well, the next step on top of that GIS is actually software that will is asset management that can. Tie work orders and problems and issues with a particular. Piece of the infrastructures and as time goes on, you're able to more intelligently look at. Your system and put your money where it needs to go to get the most bang for your buck, but in order to utilize that software, the the best. Well, I don't say the best, but we're you're looking at twenty five thousand dollars a year to be able to implement that software. So. As as amazing as it would be, we're not quite sure we ready to pull that trigger and we're looking to other options to see if we can find cheaper ones or we're able to do something else. We've also had some discussion about security and cameras in the parks. We have no money budgeted in this budget for. Any face, we run phase three basically of our security upgrade. Water shop needs a roof replacement, probably in the next few years. There's some specialty equipment on that goes on the backhoe with the bullet prick, which is kind of a really giant jackhammer that would allow us to. Break apart obstacles when we're a lot of times when we get down on these water leaks and on these where they've built thrust blocks. And if thrust blocks is a giant block of concrete, sometimes that concrete gets up over the things and makes it difficult to do our work. So you gotta break it off and get out of the way. Wood chipper, we used to have a wood chipper that was used quite frequently, but it was tied to the Ford tractor. The Ford tractor went down. And wasn't worth the money to replace the Ford tractor. So the chipper kind of went away. So we're looking to replace that. Our skid steer is pretty old. We use a skid steer extensively during the summer and in the winter time we use it to plow sidewalks. It's going to be need replaced in the next few years. The hydraulic saw is pretty expensive, but it's a. It's a pretty huge safety thing. And as you kind of heard tonight, Jared's. Jared lives, breathes and dies safety. One of the most dangerous things that they do is have to take a chop saw or a circular saw and cut pipe. This is a hydraulic saw that bolts to the pipe. You're not holding it in your hands. You're not really over the saw a lot of. A lot of injuries happen where saws will bind or kick back and hit people or hit people on the legs and so, but it's it's like a thirty thousand dollar saw.
Is it sheer instead of rotating blade?
I think it's, I honestly, I'm not sure. Couldn't tell you for certain. What exactly how it works. The other big one that we're looking at. Is the back truck. We you saw how important that was tonight. We do have a very nice piece of equipment. We work hard to keep it nice. And as he mentioned, they they do wear out. They're very, the the work they do is very abrasive and very. It's it's difficult to keep those maintained. So you want to stay on the upper end. An issue with trying to stay on top of that is you have to commit. And sign your name on the line to get a new one coming. Right now, I'm about a year and a half ahead of time. So sometime in the next two or three years, not we haven't done it in this budget, but the next two or three years will likely be coming to you with the next phase of, okay. Let's sell the back truck because it's got the most value now that we can get out of it and roll it into a newer piece of equipment and how much that's going to cost. So. So those are all, all those things are would be nice for us just to snap our fingers, make happen, but they are not currently built into the budget. I know that super fast, super. High level. Want to see if you have any questions, give us any direction, any guidance that you would like to see in the budget. We'll do a better, more smooth presentation the next time and the next time, and then the fourth time it'll be pretty polished. Oh, yeah, I have to get I will bore you to death with spreadsheets if you want me to. That's a that's a good.
School like and then the crosswalk on thirty two hundred we have. Across cars that could actually impact that was cool and see where all that pen down.
And you realize they're asking us to give them two hundred.
And I'm saying, yeah, I'm saying we're gonna keep it and this is how we're gonna spend.
Yeah, that's a that's a good point. Now, impact fees are very. Very tight and very regulated, so we'll do our best to make all that happen. That's a great idea. That said, one of the other in big items is development and how that impacts and affects the budget. We tend to budget kind of how we I have a spreadsheet built that I sit down with Austin. How many townhouses do we build last year? How many single family houses? How many condos and? Try to make a guess on what we think we're going to do upcoming. We try to be conservative on that and then that number of townhouses and. And single family homes really ripples through the budget in all of the impact fees. So that being a particular one, that's a great point. Maybe we need to look at that number and see if we need to adjust that because. That's not really anticipated. We're just looking at houses and townhouses. So good point, good catch. Yeah. But like I said, we 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 tend to be pretty conservative there.
Yeah, I don't know what the council's doing. Stomach for truth and taxation. Then while if if Justin's estimate is probably good, is good. We're about twenty five percent off of some magic target of one six hundred. Of point oh. Oh, one three.
I don't think that danger not keeping keeping the movie out. Without having that increase in government asking for. Money for the new well and tank stuff. You said you were saving.
Two point four. Yes, we, like I said, that's I think we're high. I'm personally okay with that if you are. Tried to bump all the maintenance accounts about two to three percent. But really. You know, salaries, those maintenance accounts, and then some of the nondepartmental insurance, IT. You know, those are really the big changes that amount to that four percent change.
Okay, thank you, Justin. So. Good job. There's a lot that goes into that, but the good news is I eat that it's a. The. The work accumulates and carries over to next year. Is that right? I mean, if you had to, the first time you had to do a budget. It's a lot to pick up on or.
Yeah. Well, I'm still earning a lot for sure. Amy's been a great help. I really focus on the numbers. Amy really focuses on the information and I I forgot to. Apologize again for the late PDF. Man, we struggled, struggled to get that PDF. Amy put a ton of time to make that document.
Change there.
I don't know. It's there's like this gremlin. I know what tab it is out of twenty tabs. I know what it is. And I don't know what it is on that tab. I've recreated that tab and gone to twenty seven other places in the document that reference back to that tab, but I just we. I couldn't get it to print. Yeah, it was pretty. I it's been a long time since I've been that stumped. In Excel, I.
Okay, well, thanks. If you don't have comments, Justin, we'll move on to.
Maybe if I just say the last thing is again, this is just a continual process over the next month and a half. Please reach out to me if you have questions, if you want to come in and sit down, you want to go over things, talk about things. I I could spend twelve hours a day for the next month and a half if you want to on this budget. So please, if you have questions or issues or concerns, come talk to me. We don't, you don't need to wait for a council meeting.
Tom, why don't you go first tonight? Can you, may you, will you? He started to read that.
I'm good. I didn't break that up. One thing, generator got installed. We'll be testing that pretty soon for city hall.
This is a backup?
Hmm, that's backup power generator. Have we got the one of public works in yet?
CJ, let's go do it. Garrett.
I have a couple of questions. One, if anyone has any clarification on a delivery receipt, now morning citations for people at school.
Have you seen the letter?
No.
Informed that. It was mostly citations. That informed people that maybe they shouldn't have done that.
You said citations.
The warnings, warnings.
Something of character and people. For something for thirty minutes. You know, they came out a bunch of warnings on their cars and parking there.
And they were mad.
And they're mad because they got the same. She says, are you the scientist saying you can't park here?
Yeah.
It's clarification.
Yeah, so so there was a special event at the school. And. Evan Evan happened to go by and see a bunch of cars that were parked illegally, so he did.
Is there a sign that says no parking?
Uh. I there, I mean, I get there are there are places where there's no parking. I think where they were, they were in the park strip or in the bike lane, which is illegal. So. No one got cited. Um, there were warnings. We we discussed it and and one thing we realized is because they did get a special event permit. That we could do better is when. In including schools, when if there are special events, we need to do a better job at ensuring. They've got places for people to park that's legal because that wasn't really something that we discussed with the special event permit. So I think that could help in the future on something like that. We've also talked about thirty two hundred south. So I mean, it it's it's illegal to park in a bike lane. It's illegal to park in the park strip. There's some areas where. We're we're talking about delineating the bike lane from where it's parking because the bike lane is so wide, not necessarily by heritage, but.
School.
Uh, maybe, I mean, they're building quite a good parking with the middle school, so I don't know. And they and they're gonna have on, they're gonna have probably adequate width. On the through road to have on street parking there. So I not necessarily, I mean, middle school kids don't drive, so that helps.
And so. It's that in between me.
It's what I'm sure she was referring to.
Could you send me the letter?
Obviously, most times in years are. It's an education and people know what the rules are.
I think it proves something you sadly buy. It's not true for everyone, but. People are just as bad about warnings as they are about citations.
They are. That's what we've seen.
And. You know, some people are. In fact, that guy, I'm gonna just add on that. He he called me, left me a message. He's mad at hops because he got a parking citation and I. Describe, I said, man, I thought for sure we were just gonna do warnings on that. When I call him back, it was a warning.
Uh, the only other question I have. Is I made adjustments for doing on vans. Is there an opportunity to make those adjustments to existing vans, turtles, whatever we call them.
Islands, mountable islands.
Mountable islands, is there, is there, what would it take? I guess I'm trying to understand. Whatever, would it be hard for us to make maybe those adjustments to the existing?
Yeah, the. Jackhammer mound.
Is that required us, Eric? Have three of us ask for the resolution to come up to make a change to that? Guess we do want to know what the constitution is going to be is.
Yeah, so I'll 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 explain my thought on that. What I have to go on is what the council voted on. So as long as the council says this is what we're going to do for the next year, then that's what I'm gonna. Put on the agenda for the next year. But if. You know, you make a case or certainly if three of you say. I want this on the agenda, then it'll be on the agenda. But. Until I hear a clear proposal for an agenda item, I'm gonna do what the council told me to do. But until I hear a clear proposal for an agenda item, I'm gonna do what the council told me to do. Justin.
My two cents would just be, let's see how the new ones go. Cause if we put the new ones in and people still hate them, and we end up changing them all at some point, I don't wanna change it.
Yeah.
That was exactly my thought. Let's see if the modifications Thomas described. But that's all I get off. Oh, second one question, so meanwhile, next week I got an email about the APA. Our day is just the one day, right, that we signed up for?
I I signed you up for the whole thing. If you only want to come one day, that's fine. Uh, I think for planning commissioners, the the price is the same, or or and or city council for. For officials, so yeah, it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Thursday's a full day and that and that has kind of the citizen planner track. Um. We're also gonna be doing a few tours, starring Tom, going to twelve hundred west. As part of that tour. We're gonna highlight twelve hundred west to the planners around the state.
I'll be doing Logan's job too.
Yeah, and and he's gonna be highlighting some projects in Logan. I mean, they'll be there as well. We're also, we're also going to highlight Morgan Farm on a tour. Uh, on open space preservation, agricultural, Roxy, Roxy and. Mike and her daughter's gonna speak at that, so. But if any of yous. Yeah, you 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 can sign up for them just when you go to the conference, but if anyone's interested in. Going, I can let you know when when those are, if you want to reach out. Even if you just want to show up to. The tour, yeah. No, cause. Lack of time. We had to narrow it down and not just focus on Nibley, it's anyway.
Can I, real quick, Garrett, I just, how do we get, what's the best way to move forward to answer your question about the zoning? I feel like it'd be fine if you just want to call Joel and talk to Joel yourself, or do you want us to set that up and be there with you, or how do you want? Okay, we'll get, we'll make sure you have his contact.
Or write the question down, get an email. Justin, Justin, you can let Joel know if it's coming, so we just end up in spam box or.
I think that can help, so we know we're getting the right question. We don't want to get the, the wrong question to him. There's a lot of nuances.
What question did you ask Phil?
Counsel report from Erin. Uh, she was curious if um, Nibley has the city flag.
She can do now.
Uh, we may be adding to the city flag.
Sounds great. Salt Lake City took the Sago Lily.
Appreciate all that, everyone does. You know, we got a lot of commercial, it's all, it's all, okay. Um, put in there, I was just wondering what uh, discussed some time was what, it was a city to help attract to commercially. It's incentivized by density, like going up like four stories and like different things there, I know. Maybe you can probably experiment too, that might be worth a discussion sometime, or maybe you get a consultant come in. Just say, hey, this is the true dude who wants to be here, send an article, help us.
One of the, there's a couple efforts there that might not happen as quickly, one of them especially as we'd like, but the. General plan update is gonna look seriously at what is our commercial potential. Um, what's our sales tax leakage, you know, we're a different town than they were ten years ago. What are, you know, do we have enough proper zone commercial? Uh. It won't necessarily be how do you sell or market your city or commercial, I. I'm not sure those have ever been very. Productive, but it would hopefully help us answer the question, how do, how do we look at tracking?
Cause we had that one.
And what do we want in the first place?
Someone did the study and asked, you kind of said, hey, your city would be attractive for these different types, but. I don't know how, if there's something that we can.
I should dig that back out.
I did, I, I pulled it back out, I mean. I've sent it to them, yeah.
The other one is highway one sixty five, there's a study that. What's one sixty five in turn into, what should it be, are we get pushed off of one sixty five, like we get pushed off eighty nine ninety one? How much does it take to commercial, is there a long one sixty five, not only for Nibley, but. Uh, probably it's a little bit of Nibley, Logan is in on study. So.
Yeah, I just know some cities to track, like big box stores, like incentivize by doodles, just letting it in or. Know someone, we didn't know where it is, but it's, okay, there's just, there's something big value.
There's, there's, there's definitely a lot of different methods and approaches we can take with economic development, whether.
Folks that are in the benefit series and CRA are worrying about other things right now.
Yeah.
That's something to dig into. Yeah.
Thanks, uh, Tom, I just remembered, so I'm gonna go back to actually an agenda item, but. Becky's boss. With the uh, that she works with on pollinator habitat, a a a person named Mindy Wheeler. Not federal, but she's the state of Utah rare plant expert. And Becky said, you should talk to Mindy, she could probably guide you on what has worked with. The federal fish and wildlife and what hasn't and. If you remind me, I will. I'll get ahold of Mindy and see if we can pick her brain. She's a good, she's a good person, be great, yeah. So it'd be, you know, like somewhere between Nibley City and federal government is the state of Utah, and she might have some ideas about. How to get this done. Uh, the tree planting was pretty exciting for Becky. And all the volunteers on a hundred fifty trees that firefly, I was off of pirating, so I was in trouble. For a while, but it was kind of cool because we had this meeting with, yeah, Jensen Sheriff. Right at the end, he said, hey, you have some work for people to do and. Justin put an effort into it and Tim Ramirez put an effort into it and. It was like, it was really great. There were like seven different, seven individuals came out on a work release program. They're they, they're not in jail, they're not inmates, they just need the community time and they were great workers. Uh, Tim said, they should do more of that, I agree. They're looking for those kinds of projects, folks. Got another batch of photos from Randy Feizer, so. Yeah, as soon as I, yeah. I will, and you'll forward it to Tim, okay? And I'll go somewhere else. This is about engine brakes on thirty. The guy is beside himself, it's just terrible his life up. And they know it. So they just pummel it when they go through. They see him out there and they just. Uh, that's it for me. Thanks for the discussion, thanks for all your work. If there's no business and no action.